It's just, it's weird because Mayor Marlin really appears to be overreaching her powers to squash the both the voices of the people and that of the city council. Skim through it again. Look at just how often the words presiding officer are replaced with presiding officer or mayor. Or how one section that she and the city attorney wrote into it takes the power from quote, "a majority of the members present" and gives it to quote, "the mayor or presiding officer." I, I, I'm sorry, but Mayor Marlin was not elected to sit down with the city lawyer and decide to write rules for civility, telling us when we can speak, what we can speak about, and decide for you, for the council members, that if she doesn't like the tone, the topic, or anything, she has some sort of fiat over you? No, that's not in her position. I don't want a mayor to have fiat over our city council. I'm, and I'm honestly, I would be surprised if she discussed this rule in depth with any of you or provided it to you with a whole heck of a lot of time to look at. Because now I've already got complaints filed with a number of people over the way I was treated last meeting, over the way my other friends were treated. And I hate doing that. I don't like filing official complaints. I hate it. But that was wrong what happened. It was flat out wrong the way we were silenced. And I'm really, really, really concerned about this new rule. It is so hard to take rules back that take away freedoms from people. It is extremely difficult. Anyway, I've spoken so long that now I have to say the rest of it quickly because I started rambling and reforming. So have any of y'all looked into what I brought up a few weeks ago about the black kid detained during the Aliyah Lewis incident simply because he was black? The kid who was told by the cops he matched a description that didn't exist? I gave you tam- timestamps, I gave you quotes, I gave you cops lying to detain a black child and haven't heard anything back. So if you have a chance, I'd love to hear back on this. The moral of the story is, please, city council, keep your power. You decide how we talk to you. The mayor does not. Thanks for listening, and I truly hope that all of you have a good night.
Thank you, Ben. All right, next I have Tracy Chong. Tracy, you should be muted now.
Yeah, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. City council members, just so you know, none of us wake up Monday morning gleeful that we get to criticize you tonight. In fact, every Sunday night I start being filled with dread because I have to speak up at city council. I'm naturally a very non-confrontational person, so this speaking up week after week is not something I look forward to at all. This week was even harder because of how I was interrupted over and over again last meeting, until I could not even string a sentence together. I felt so embarrassed that night and for days after. City council members, if this is how you want to treat the public, go ahead and vote yes on Marlin's proposed ordinance. Mayor Marlin, reading your memo to city council last week and your proposed ordinance to modify the existing public input rules, when you say you have the legal right to silence the public based on your chosen criteria, who are you consulting? Was it James Simon who has blatantly lied to city council members and the public to justify illegal actions of the city? This is not a personal attack. Saying James Simon is a liar is merely stating facts that are backed by Illinois Public Access Councilor rulings and existing FOIA laws. I guess if you don't want to call Simon a liar, then he is just an incompetent lawyer. I don't know which is more detrimental to the relationship between the city and the public. The city of Urbana has been found to be in violation of FOIA by charging exorbitant fees to the public for public records. After this issue was brought up by residents, myself included, week after week, instead of admitting to a misstep, Mayor Marlin, James Simon, and Kurt Borman immediately went on the defense, sending out memos, having FOIA presentations where they spun more lies. They lied that there are only two people assigned the current recurrent requested designation. They lied about the legality of the fees. And they lied that only two people who submitted many, many, many FOIA requests were being subjected to these fees. We fight these lies week after week by speaking up at city council, calling out these lies. As usual, instead of apologizing for the missteps, Mayor Marlin decides to go on the defensive again, playing victim by citing personal attacks, profanity, and political threats, and using this as a means to silence public input. By the way, Mayor Marlin, what exactly do you mean by political threats? Are you considering the public saying that they are not going to vote for you during the next election a political threat? Also, in an email to the neighborhood, a council member cited the inappropriate video shown during a city council meeting in response to a residence query about the new proposed public input rules. As far as I know, that was the Zoom bombing incident months ago, and it has since been solved by changing to the webinar format. To bring that issue up and to use it as the reason for new rules is dishonest and disingenuous. It is exactly this type of dishonesty that makes the public so outraged that they have to come back week after week after week to address council. I remain hopeful for a Monday I can wake up and not feel compelled to speak at city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next I have Ed Garrett. Ed, you should be unmuted. Ed, if you hit your button, I think you just muted yourself.
Oh, here's the clicker.
Do you know what's going on?
I can, I can hear you, Ed.
I don't know what you're doing. What is it?
I can't.
Can you?
I can't hear him.
Well, we'll give them a minute to try and sort, sort that out. At least they hand raised, Jason, and we'll try to come back to them. We'll go to Giovanna.
Okay, we got enough?
I can hear you, Giovanna.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for missing the last few weeks. We've been a little busy between moving and getting ready for this past weekend's food delivery. So I just wanted to kind of give everyone an update about where we're at and kind of where we're headed from this month on. For the last two months, the Rotary Club has partnered with the, with Silver Hearts. As a result, last month, we were not only able to do our normal food delivery, but we were able to hand out $5 gift cards to McDonald's to all the families to kind of celebrate the beginning of the school year and things like that. This, yesterday, Saturday, whatever this past Saturday was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We did our normal monthly delivery with the Stone Creek Food, our food. We added extra things with the kids being at home. And we handed out about 140 apartments worth of food. So, and I ran into a few people on my way home. And once again, the need is, as we expect, very, very prominent. But the, the attitude is out of gratefulness. It was a, one of the families is a family with no kids, and they said that they desperately needed the food this week. So that was really encouraging to hear since I'm not right there anymore. Going forward, we will, we are going to continue our partnership with the Rotary Club, and we've got some longer-term plans for Silver Hearts in play there. For October, we have, we have bigger plans. What we are planning on doing is instead of just delivering the food from Stone Creek, we are going to be putting together a Halloween party in a bag items. And those, so basically everything a family needs to throw their own little Halloween party. On the Park District, we'll be putting some crafts in there for the kids. We'll have, you know, pop, popcorn, whatever else, you know, we've got a whole list of things, Halloweeny stuff in there, including things to make a cake as a family. We have also, the Park District will also have their new van out there, and they'll be handing out 50 PPE bags for the residents. Our volunteers will be dressing up in costumes since we cannot do our annual costume drive. So all the food will be being delivered in superhero costumes is the theme for this one. And Crayner, they have a class on costume design and civic engagement, and I'm working with them on doing some of the costumes and really trying to make it special for the kids. We just got a list from Saturday as to what superheroes the kids would like to meet. And so hopefully this will, although it is by no means a normal year in any sense and a normal Halloween, hopefully this will bring some sort of fun to that. So those are, and we are delivering October 17th at 11:00 AM. As I get more details worked out about packaging and the details for that morning, we will let you know. And then also going forward, normally, as you know, October is the last month that Archer does anything. This year, however, we are going to keep delivering food. We'll work with Stone Creek to see what they're doing for Thanksgiving. We're looking at maybe doing boxes of nothing but fresh produce. You know, we just, we'll see what's going on there and we'll partner with them and see what we can do. And then for December, we are looking at possibly getting quote, dress up clothes for boys and girls and handing those out as gifts, because that was something that we realized through this costume class that kids don't get, and all the stuff that these kids get unless they ask for something like that, it's not something they really usually get. So those are ideas going forward, so we will continue this year unlike in years past. So that's, you know, that's where we're at. We've got some great partnerships going and new things coming up. We are also going to do a prayer walk again and try and do that monthly. As soon as I get that set up, I will eat that. Yeah, I will email that out to everyone. So we thank you guys for your support. It is so important. So many cities don't have this kind of support behind them. And, and also we're working with Rachel with the Arts Department. She's got a whole project going on that we're working with her too, that there will be some special artworks going out to all the families by the end of the year. So thank you for your time. Thank you for everything you're doing to help us do this, and I know it's making a difference over there.
Thanks, Joe. All right, we'll go back to Ed Garrett one more time and see if we can't get Ed recognized.
Okay, I can't tell if that's working.
It is, if you can hear us.
Okay, yes. I couldn't hear you before. All right, my comments are related to the proposal for the Champaign County visitors website. I'd like to see the marketing budget as a whole, I guess. The, and where this contribution to the website fits in the overall marketing plan. So the marketing plan should have some hierarchy to it. So, you know, some schemes are going to be more productive than others. And where does the website, the Champaign County website rank in the marketing plan for the city? For the proposed level of contribution to the organization to run the website, I ran some rough numbers, and I figure you probably need somewhere in the neighborhood of about 500 visitors that would come to Urbana and spend money to generate enough gross revenue from which you could harvest some tax revenue to pay for the costs and then generate some small return on that marketing investment. So the question is, would that website yield an additional 500 visitors to Urbana specifically that would offset the cost, the marketing costs for contributing to the, to the website? I don't know, and I'm not trying to say yes or no, spend money, but I'm encouraging the council to consider the spending critically in light of the overall marketing budget and in consideration of some budget challenges for the city. So there are some shortcomings, and every dollar spent should be considered very carefully. You can only spend a dollar once, so spend it well. Is this the best way to spend the marketing dollar is, is my question. So the, and I guess one way to look at this would be what are some other strategies that people would use in planning their trip to Urbana? Would they go to this website or would they simply do a Google search and say, you know, you know, what are good Mexican restaurants in Urbana? And use that as their way to find their way around town rather than going to this, to this website to, to guide them? I did look at the website. The website is nicely designed. I just don't know if people would seek that as their, as a resource for guiding them, their visit to, to Urbana. Anyway, so consider it carefully, maybe ask for some marketing data, like number of unique visits to the website. Is there an increase in number of visits to the website as specific events approach, football games, Sweet Corn Festival, et cetera? That would justify the utility of the website in garnering additional visits to town that would not have occurred without the use of the website. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Next I have Grace Wilken.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Grace Wilken. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm an Urbana resident. I'm commenting today on ordinance number 2020-09-049, the proposed changes to the city code, Chapter 2, Sections 2 through 4, limiting public input. I guess tonight I don't have to clearly state that, but I will just to be sure that I'm not cut off or interrupted. I also want to say thank you, Jared, for finally following the current city code and allowing us five minutes each since there are less than 20 people speaking. It's refreshing to have five minutes to speak and five minutes to listen to my fellow community members. It's really not that long, and it's so hard to complete a complex thought in three minutes. So these changes to the city code limit the time per speaker and total time for public input and allow for censorship and irregular scheduling of public input in the agenda. This is immoral and against the entire idea of local government, where city government and the mayor supposedly serve the people of Urbana. How can you serve the people of Urbana if you don't listen to the people of Urbana? I know that you are limited in your meeting time, but that means you need to make more time for public comment and for your own discussion. You could hold special meetings for additional public input and discussion, since there are so many important issues right now. Limiting public input is not the only option. It's not even a good option. People may be coming to city council meetings repeatedly speaking on the same issue, and that's because the issue hasn't been addressed or resolved. This is protected speech, and the public has the right to speak at public meetings, even if it's critical, heated, repetitive, or you just don't want to hear it. By addressing the issues and listening to the public, you will foster positive relationships with the public and be able to serve the people of Urbana. By limiting and censoring public input, you are driving a further wedge between this local government and the public. Some other questions is, does the deferment part of the code mean that the council can defer public input for two consecutive meetings? This does not allow for public input and seems like a roundabout way of essentially canceling public input. I'm disappointed in the city of Urbana government, and this does not reflect the Urbana that I've known my whole life. Also, the gender-specific language in this code is outdated, insensitive, and exclusionary, especially after the mayor misgendered a member of the public during last week's meeting and then did not apologize or even acknowledge that before cutting them off from speaking. The language in the code would be better written using gender-neutral terms like singular "they" instead of he or she. The code already uses singular "they" the first time that it's necessary, and then it switches to he, she, and his, hers. I think that this is one small step towards inclusivity in our city language. And then the next step is to educate yourselves so that you can respectfully interact with your public, particularly those that are gender non-binary or queer. How can you talk about writing a statement on how Urbana is inclusive and working towards social equity when this is so obviously not true from what I've seen from this government over the past few months? You need to respect and listen to the community. There are so many passionate, educated, and innovative people in this community, and you're limiting their input. I often hear the council talk about how it needs more information or needs to get public input on an issue when the public just gave you their input and the information. You know that we have racist policing. You've seen the data and heard the public input. You know that limiting public input is against the idea of local government and is a power move so that citizens can't have a platform for even five minutes. You will miss out on important input if you block public comment with censorship, time limits, irregular scheduling, registering before the meeting, and using gender-specific language in the written code, and even towards individuals who identify as non-binary. Please vote no to this change in the city code on public input. Please consider wording in inclusivity in all written and verbal communications, and please consider how you can serve the people of Urbana, starting by defending our right to make public comments.
Oh, thank you, Grace. Next up I have Fiona Monroe.
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can. Go, go ahead.
Fantastic. Good evening, city council. My name is Fiona Monroe, and I'm a resident of Ward 7. I'd like to speak tonight on ordinance number 2020-09-049 that Grace was just speaking about. And I'd also like to encourage you to vote no to that ordinance, if only because I think that it's been too hastily proposed perhaps. I attempted to take notes at the last city council meeting like I always do. I had found out on that day that I tested positive for COVID-19, so I was somewhat distracted. But I do want to attempt to respond to what Mayor Marlin said at that meeting, which I believe were, were her reasons for such a restrictive ordinance. What specifically I recall Mayor Marlin saying was that the current length and maybe diversity or sometimes anger of voices being presented in public comment was frightening some people away, maybe making some people feel as if they did not want to be a part of a public comment, and that this restriction would help avoid that. I don't see how this restriction in any way could help open up the possibility of, of more people's voices being present at these meetings. I do see that it's possible that it's sometimes there are people here who are angry. I've often been angry in city council meetings, and I've tried to prevent my, my comments from reflecting that, but it can be difficult. But I don't see why it is that therefore the public's responsibility to police their own tone, so to speak, rather than the council's responsibility to make spaces for diverse types of voices in these meetings. The second reason that Mayor Marlin had for the restrictions that he placed at the last meeting was that these meetings go on too long and that they're the only opportunity for the council to do its important work. I certainly think that the council needs as much time as possible to do the work that you're trying to do, and that many of the issues you're discussing are thorny and require a significant amount of time to be discussed. However, I still don't see why restricting public comment is the only way of doing that. And most of the time, you know, when, when many people are here, we get two hours to speak. When a few people are here, we get an hour or less because there's just not that many people that have a thing to say. I'm honestly just surprised that the council doesn't want to take at least two hours a week out of their time to hear the voices of its citizens. And I don't see why this ordinance addresses that particular concern. I have other concerns about the ordinance. I think it's strange that it's being voted on tonight despite not even being proposed until sometime in the past week, I guess. But those are my main concerns, and I would appreciate it if the council were, were to hold off, at least in approving this ordinance, until some more necessary discussion could be had about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fiona.
Jared, may I ask a point of, it's an ignorance on my part because I haven't been in this position before, but are we able to answer if there's a misunderstanding?
We have typically not used this to engage in discussion with folks, and we are going to have a discussion on the rules that were proposed, so.
Yeah.
At that time.
I just, I know people thought we're voting on this tonight, and that's not accurate, so I just wanted to clarify that.
We'll make that clear when the, when the ordinance comes up, for sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem. Julie Watkins, you're up next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead, Julie.
Hi, my name is Julie Watkins. I live in Urbana. I understand why you might want to revise the policy for public input. Other speakers, previous speakers have indicated that some of these problems. However, I wish you would have been able to hear well enough why the two hours every week felt necessary to the many people giving input. And I'm sorry about the path you, this has come that I've tried to read the ordinance, and it seems like it would have been the better ways to do it. You're sending mixed signals. You, the council, saw and heard enough wrong about that recorded arrest that you have stated commitment for the necessity and the expectation of de-escalation for UPD officers, something your expensive report also recommends. I wish you could also help with the needed de-escalation of the court system. To my knowledge, the charges against Aliyah Lewis and the Memorial Day protesters have not been dropped, nor has this council made a statement urging the charges be dropped. As a member of this community, I urge the council to make such a statement. I feel this is appropriate because the, it was UPD officers making the arrest. I feel this request is appropriate because the reforms you have committed to pursue, to regain public trust, it's, this is a mixed signals when the state's attorney is aggressively pursuing felony punishment. What good does this do? What good does this do, Urbana? How does this make us safer when it makes us more angry? We, why should we want to publish people for flawed arrests? We should be better than this, and I hope you will consider making such a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next I have Christopher Hanson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hanson. I live in Urbana. I've been urging the city council to have open and honest conversations about issues for months now. And the public continues to get these statements and presentations from city staff, which are always travesties for some reason. And what happens is that because the public isn't as dumb as you assume them to be, they become rightfully upset. And you hear that from them at every meeting. And, and at every meeting, instead of having an honest conversation, we hear some new twist or some new lie, and again, the people of Urbana are not missing these things. We're, we're seeing them every time. Becoming more aware of misconduct, residents sought to learn more about what their government is doing by submitting public records requests. And instead of following the FOIA law, what happened is that Mayor Marlin and James Simon and Kurt Borman conspired. They conspired, and they conspired to defraud the public by violating state records laws. And just so the people listening now are aware, in the past 24 hours, I have forwarded five or six letters from the Illinois Attorney General indicating that the city of Urbana has been violating the Freedom of Information Act, the FOIA law. And I have at least five or six more letters in hand, and I'm aware of at least another one or two dozen more instances of violations upon other residents of Urbana. And we need to remember that Marlin and Borman and Simon and Carol Mitten all claimed repeatedly that what the city was doing was legal. And now they've got the city into a huge mess, and the Attorney General has demonstrated very clearly that you are violating state law over and over. And here we are in virtually the same situation with Diane Marlin and James Simon, the same people who conspired to violate public records laws, bringing forth a new scheme to rob the public of their right to speak at public meetings. So that's where we're at, and we're in the same position again with the same actors. And I wonder, do the city council members still trust the opinion of, of city attorney James Simon? Has, has he shown himself to be a trustworthy source of legal advice? It seems to me that most of the city council members It seems to me that most of the city council members are acting as followers when you're really meant to act as leaders. Honest conversations are not easy. They're frequently uncomfortable and they're often very difficult. But you do have a responsibility as leaders to approach that task head on and it's the right thing to do. So when you are discussing public records and public input later tonight, I hope you will have a real conversation. You don't need some lawyer with their own agenda polluting the conversation. Start at the fundamentals of transparency and free speech if you need to and build up from there in pursuit of the right answers. You may not get a perfect answer every time, but at least it will be an honest answer and it will be an answer born in Urbana, not some travesty thrust upon you by actors who don't represent the interests of the people of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next I have Emily Close.
You hear me?
Sure can. Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Emily Close. I'm a resident of Champaign. Tonight I would like to address ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero four nine. I've been watching these Urbana city council meetings for weeks now. So allow me to offer some advice to the elected officials of Urbana. Grow a thicker skin when it comes to listening to input from the public. You are sitting in those seats because the citizens of Urbana voted to put you there. Or in the case of Mr. Holbrook and Ms. Lout, the mayor chose you and the council voted to appoint you. Let me clarify if I may. Those seats are not lifetime appointments. You are not Supreme Court justices. When spring rolls around, you may find out that your heavy-handed and misguided approach to free speech does not play well in Urbana. I suspect some of you will be handed your walking papers and asked to behave badly on some other stage. Why? Because your job is not to muzzle citizens who have opinions and viewpoints that differ from yours. It is to embrace and support robust speech from those you represent and govern. Stop behaving like petulant children whose tender feelings get hurt when a citizen goes off on you during said citizens allowed and protected time to make a statement. Express gratitude once in a while to the engaged citizens who are trying despite the endless obstacles you place in their way to make Urbana a better and safer place to live. People want to be heard. They want a better and more responsive government. A government that honors and follows the Open Meetings Act and understands that the Freedom of Information Act exists so that we, the people, the citizens, the governed, are able to learn exactly how public officials are conducting our business. So please don't support the mayor's proposed ordinance change to Urbana Public Input Rules. These changes to the ordinance are unseemly, they're misguided. But most of all, these changes to the ordinance demonstrate shockingly bad government. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak without cutting me off.
Thank you, Emily. Next I have Alan Axelrod.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, Alan. Go right ahead.
All right, so there's a couple of different things to touch on. I wanted to just start with a preface. In these increasingly desperate times, we need now more than ever rigorous representation if we are going to continue to rely on such a system. We're in a pandemic, but also climate change is getting worse. We're going to have to rely on a rigorous, local, on upwards way to tackle our problems, given the current and continuing dysfunction of the federal government. I wanted to also provide a caution to the anticipated study session that would then result in the exertion of staff labor, which would then come up with an ordinance that you would feel pressured to respect the labor of the staff. And so before you go down this process, it's important to understand that the city of Decatur tried this. They tried to change the rules in the name of civility. While city council persons were being overtly hostile to each other in Decatur. It was clearly vacuous. And anybody watching the city council videos can understand when they are seeing members of the council being cut off or not recognized. That this is indeed playing out too. There are now ten or so candidates for city council in Decatur because of that dynamic. So I urge you to think about that before going forward with it. I want to also reiterate a call that I had made before that I heard reiterated today that I wasn't planning to talk about. Which was, any one of you can make an individual, doesn't even have to be by voter council, an individual statement about why the charges being pressed against Aliyah Lewis is not something that you think is right. You don't even have to say that they should be dropped. You can just express a personal disagreement. Because the reality of the situation is, we're going to have to rely on you to protect our tax dollars. And inevitably, there is going to be a counter suit. That counter suit has two targets potentially, the county and the city. And I would urge any responsible, fiscally responsible municipal representative to act proactively in making sure that Urbana is not a target because members of the council spoke out against it while the county continued to press charges. That is how you protect our community in the best sense of the case. And lastly, I want to talk about the utility shut offs issue. I've been speaking to the council for about two months. Diane Marlin had even advocated on our behalf to the governor. I have managed a campaign called the No Ameren Shutoffs Campaign. It has thirty-five member organizations spanning from Carmandale to Chicago with a vast majority of organizations in central Illinois itself. And we have been moving the different units of government successfully with very little support. We are a zero dollar campaign because there's nowhere near enough money to address this issue. And so until we have the stable economy to allow for recovery, we have to suspend utility shut offs. So again, individually, because I understand that it's not on the agenda. Individually, any one of you can issue a public statement, send a letter to the governor and share it or a tweet. City council person in Bloomington shared a tweet tagging Governor Pritzker saying, my city needs you to suspend utility shut offs. The Macon County Democrats issued a resolution calling for the suspension of utility shut offs and the restoration of service and said J B Pritzker's name. Yet a few weeks later, water shut offs occurred in their city. This past weekend, this past Friday, a tenant in Champaign had her power shut off. This is not something that we can just trust our state level government without advocacy. They have been failing us everywhere from McComb to Carbondale. McComb has had utility shut offs from their co-op as well as reportedly from a tenant who submitted information to us from Ameren. Carbondale had their water shut off by the municipal government because it's been allowed while someone was in the height of a coronavirus fever. This is costing lives. This is making people go into public spaces to meet their individual needs that they could otherwise be safely getting from home. So any one of you can speak out about this and I hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Amina Payne, you're next.
Hi, are you able to hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, my name is Amina Payne. I'm a dual resident of Ward three. And I'm speaking to agenda item number eight today. Now firstly, I would like to say that the the request for, you know, the general public to modify their tone or you know, these asks that are being had should also be asked of our public servants, our elected officials. I've been mocked. I've been attempted to be ostracized by both my own older woman and a member and members of the Urbana Board of Education. So each of these will have used, each of these elected officials have used a professional positions as elected officials and public servants to attempt to silence me, to ostracize me and discredit me personally. Such conduct shouldn't be normalized or accepted. Especially by elected officials. Now restricting public input to content on the agenda just isn't the go. It's not the way forward. I also have concerns about whether council will then just tune out of general public comment. Is that what is happening when when the audience isn't speaking to items on the agenda? Agenda generally does not reflect the concerns of nor the issues within the larger community. For example, we were presented with some really shocking arrest data of kids weeks ago that has never been placed on the agenda. And going forward and there's been nothing spoken about when this will be placed on the agenda. Now, the purpose of council meeting is to conduct the city's business. So why aren't these issues and other such issues being addressed? Criticism of government and lack of confidence in our elected leaders is rampant. And external conflict, while stressful, can also help frame issues and provide other perspectives. And most importantly, it shows that people are feeling left out, alienated from and alienated from governing bodies. So credibility is your most important asset. Therefore, listening to issues at council meetings assures that the needs and the pressures are being appropriately balanced with your mission and the greater needs of the community. So how the governing body, how city council reacts determines whether a conflict is contained or spills over into other issues. That's why you have people speaking out on issues that are not on the agenda because they're not being addressed. Now keep in mind that anger is directed at your role, not at you as individuals. And so I actually urge all of you to look into the work of Greg Cesar. He's an Austin City Council member who consistently speaks out on issues and against governmental issues that he knows will affect the wider community. City council's not a cult. You guys don't all have to agree. So I urge you all to use your voices. Effective leaders listen actively to critics and they listen to learn and to understand, not to argue or dispute or to silence others. I urge you to find some area of agreement by sorting out this issue into those that can be dealt with and those that maybe outside the scope of the authority to to resolve it in that way and to brainstorm further. Thank you.
Thank you, Amina. Next we have Megan McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Okay. Hold on one second. Okay, so, okay, so I'm Megan McDonald from Ward five. Oh, I've been showing up consistently to city council meetings. Probably since April, I showed up once or twice because I'd seen the Aliyah Lewis video and then in East Urbana, I'd seen a black teenager male had a gun pulled on him on my block and then like ten to twelve cop cars showed up. And my partner and I videotaped it and I don't know, just since, I mean, police brutality and just the police intent racism isn't anything new, but I guess I just started taking more notice in Urbana and I started showing up more. But yeah, I've been showing up since my friends were arrested and jailed and brutalized by the police that you endorse. I had I, you know, I'm Aliyah's friend and I am friends with people that were arrested on May thirty first, simply because they were near the the scene because they were black. And I, you know, I'm I'm not going to be quiet about that. No matter how much you change the rules, like there's never going to be an ordinance agenda item about the people at Marketplace Mall on May thirty first. You're never going to talk about that. So I'm going to talk about that when I can because it needs to be addressed. It needs like, is this the Urbana? Is this the police that, is this the police force that we want? Is this the city that we want? You endorse the police, you protect them, you walk in lockstep with them. So you're going to hear from me. No matter how clever you think these new rules are, the public will work around these rules that they'll toe the line, they'll push back and you'll not find the civil peace you're wishing. Mayor Marlin interrupted me for the first time when I brought up that Chief Seraphin didn't prioritize being at an important panel discussing the Champaign Urbana's police role in the community. There's only two chief of police is in Champaign, Urbana. And one of them didn't show up, even though apparently, you know, that meeting was rescheduled four times, but that, you know, that meeting could have been rescheduled again. And Mayor Marlin could have waited until I was finished to mention that, but the point wasn't whether or not Chief Seraphin was in town. It was that the community sees that he's not taking our concerns and research seriously. He doesn't believe there's any accountability to be taken by him or the U P D for the Aliyah Lewis case. You all fought tooth and nail to prove that beating a young black woman was in line with Urbana's use of force policy. You spent twenty thousand dollars to prove that. So I'm allowed to be upset about that. And now you're fighting to cut public comment down from five minutes to three, when you haven't been giving us the five minutes consistently anyways. I really appreciate the five minutes today. Thanks, Jared. Might be our last chance. Um, so if I have and I bring up issues with Chief Seraphin who sits in a mayoral appointment position, I will be muted in the future. Because in that instance, I have concerns about both people in these powerful positions. So who do I express these concerns to? What you're doing is a definition of tone policing, of white silence. The city has so much money in the police budget, but the police do not serve and protect. All I have seen all summer is the police causing more homelessness. I don't want to show up for hours every Monday. At least you all get paid something for this labor. I have to show up week after week, knowing the city government isn't listening to me or my fellow Urbana residents. I have to show up because I see young women having their very lives threatened by the violence and displacement cops cause by arresting people for reasons that are a result of systemic racism. I'm enraged by people who call themselves democratic, but try to silence and misguide the very core of democracy, which is input from the people around you, not just a dictatorship. There are places in the United States where people have been protesting every day for the last one hundred and fifty days. But we're sitting here in Urbana with our hands in the air because we have to deal with you. We have to deal with the Democrat state's attorney, Julia Reeves, the judges, the cops that you endorse and while you all endorse felony sentences for minor quote unquote crimes. Laws that were written by racists during a racist time to protect the white and affluent. And this is how we will all remember you, how you acted in the summer following George Floyd's murder. So anyway, anger actually can enact change. I would like you to think of any big civil or human rights changes that have occurred without anger. Anger is productive. Rage may not always be, but policing our tone is ableist and it holds up white supremacy. Some people have emotional regulation issues. Some people are traumatically and clinically stressed. Some people simply do not want to or see an honest, true reason to mask the disappointment they feel with those who quote unquote represent us. You would not act this way if we were passionate about something you supported, if we are showing up for something you agree with, leaves me only to believe. This leaves me only to believe because you inherently believe that Aliyah Lewis shouldn't have justice. You believe that cops should have the millions of dollars they do, even as the conversation and research points to their failures, their inherent racism and misuse of power. Um, if you all allow these new public input rules to pass, or I mean, I guess there's not a vote, but if you all go forward with this, I'm going to believe that you all believe that the, you know, public input isn't vital to what you do. So thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next I have Sarah Nixon.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. City Council and Mr. Miller. I have a disability recognized under the Americans with Disabilities Act and I'm feeling very sick and debilitated today and developing a fever and symptoms of flu. And all of the above, especially the fever, which is impairing my ability to organize my thoughts and structure my comment. Um, are leading me to therefore need to respectfully request a minor and reasonable accommodation under the ADA in the form of a few extra minutes. So if you the council would agree to circle back to me in thirty minutes or so, or at whatever moment is convenient to you. I will endeavor to have my comment come like thought out and 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 ready to deliver.
I'm sure we can make that accommodation, Sarah, so you can get in. Will probably to give you enough time, we have four resolutions. And then we have a staff report. I'll bring that public comment back in between those resolutions and that staff report.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Is there anyone else who wishes to address? Okay, thanks, Sarah. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council who has not spoken or raised their hand yet? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Just so folks know, folks who emailed comments in, your names will get entered into the public record having submitted comments for this meeting. All right, next, on our agenda, we have resolution number 2020-09-046. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement with Visit Champaign County for F Y 2020 to 2021. Jane DeLuce is here with us. Dan, I don't know if you wanted to introduce this or if we're just going to let Jane take it away.
I think Steph McMahon is actually going to take the lead on that.
Okay.
Yep. Good evening. Tonight I'm bringing for your consideration a resolution to adopt a one-year community partnership agreement for funding Visit Champaign County, our local tourism convention and visitors bureau. The proposed contribution of $10,000 is included in this year's budget. V C C works to promote market and market our region to visitors whom we welcome to fill our hotel rooms, patronize restaurants, purchase gas, all which add to our local economy. In 2019, V C C realized a record 7% increase in travel expenditures, which led to an 8.1 increase, percentage increase in local tax revenues. Statistics like these demonstrate a measurable return on investment for the city's contribution. The tourism industry has been hit especially hard by the pandemic and the response. In response, V C C has shifted organizational priorities to create and promote media content, including posters and videos about safety for residents and businesses. They created the Champaign County Safe website. They've communicated changes in the event calendar, all while continuing to promote our region and attempt to attract new businesses and events. Because of their value-added responsibilities, we've changed the name of this agreement and added a task of disseminating safety information to the community as needed. I'd like to welcome Jane DeLuce, the president and CEO of Visit Champaign County, to tell you more.
Thank you, Stephanie. I really appreciate it. And can I go ahead and share a screen?
You should be able to.
Now I can. There we go. And I'm going to make sure that you can hear that. It's moving slow, but it's getting there. While that's loading, I do want to just say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. And you've received a copy of our fiscal year 20 report. And tonight I will share the reality of where we are today. Okay. So the greater, sorry, the greater, only seven months ago, we unveiled Destination 2023. And at that time, it was a new destination vision that would provide energetic and innovative experiences, attracting visitors and potential residents from around the world. We adopted a new organizational vision, which was to be a connected and collaborative leader in promoting the region as an extraordinary destination to visit, work and live. And we promote a welcoming destination experience for visitors to strengthen economic opportunity and enhance the lives of residents. The future was really bright. You look at our 2019 numbers, they're record breaking. We had the largest percentage of growth in the entire state of Illinois, our region, the entire state of Illinois. The travel and tourism in this area supports 3,270 jobs, generates a total payroll of $98.1 million. Non-residential spending exceeded $448 million and it added $8.2 million in local taxes to our community. We have many successes that happened early in fiscal year 20, but I'm very proud of one I just wanted to bring up, which was the V C C-produced Restaurant Week with record number of 32 participating restaurants and over 44,000 website visits during this promotion. And as you can see at the bottom of the slide, this year we will be doing Restaurant Week again, but it will be the takeout edition based on the current COVID restrictions. As Steph alluded to, we created new organizational priorities when the world changed and travel stopped. We shifted our organizational priorities to the compassion for people, the support for hospitality industry, organizational survival and readiness to welcome visitors when the time is right. We responded in many ways, including a message of hope to our residents. That message of hope had over 14,000 views and shared hundreds of times. We had to cancel our toast to tourism, which was scheduled for May. And we redirected those event expenses to create a hospitality relief fund. With several Champagne County hotels temporarily closed, with either hotels furloughing and laying off staff, we raised over $12,000 and provided financial assistance to 42 displaced employees from each of our current hotel partners. Not only were these funds reallocated from our toast to tourism, we also received a matching donation from the Champaign Urbana Hotel Lodging Association. From day one, we became an even stronger community resource. We've maintained a comprehensive list of updates of events and everything that's happening. We've changed those dates as things close, as things reopen, as things change their hours, as people figure out outdoor seating. We've had 21,000 views of our, this area, the COVID-19 business and event updates on our website. And we've been in constant contact with our hotels, our attractions, our local businesses. We also co-created on Facebook the Champaign County Rallies Around Restaurant Retail site that has over now 5,300 members. And we hosted a webinar for promoting safety and hospitality for our area hotels, attractions and restaurants. In addition, we built and maintained the champagnecountysafe.org website. We created the Champaign County Safety Pledge alongside with the graphics and posters that you can see on the slide. We continue to add to the business and public resources as those become available. And we created a pandemic dining etiquette video, which you can see a screenshot of Mayor Marlin, who participated in that video. At the same time, we've been booking future business with a lot of emphasis on the sports area. We attended a virtual networking event that connected sports, events and tourism industry together. Mike Kuhn on our staff attended, had 15 appointments with event organizers. And since that time, we've had several follow-up requests for proposals that is bringing business to this area in the future. They're interested in new development and also existing sports facilities. And in the area of meetings and conferences, we turned our focus to small meetings and conferences that can be hosted safely. We rescheduled postponed events. We've worked with event organizers. We've worked with event spaces to reconfigure to meet the guidelines. We're creating hybrid events with virtual components to be for it. And we had to suspend all group travel because it was fiscally unable to happen due to the number of passengers that are allowed on a motor coach. In addition, and probably our most significant move to a lot of people, is we had to move the experience guide to a digital version only. It is online. It's a tremendous opportunity. And in addition to that, we created virtual experience for residents and for future visitors to our area. I invite all of you to check out the videos that are, tell the story of our community. During all this time, we also continue partnering with Economic Development Corporation and 40 North on chambanaproud.com. And in addition to the shirt designs, we designed a brand new T-shirt, the white one with the champagne Urbana with a block I in the middle. What was great about that is we took $5 from each purchase of that shirt and of the tote bag during the whole month of July and August and raised $430 that went to the Champaign County COVID Relief Fund. This website will become the future for an ambassador program that we're wanting to create for people to be able to help us tell the story to future visitors and potential residents. And in the middle of all that, we landed the IHSA Boys State Basketball Tournament. After 25 years of being hosted in Peoria, the IHSA Boys State Basketball Tournament will return to the State Farm Center. We are excited about that. We're still figuring out when that will actually be held for the first time, based on the, on the restrictions with sports. But truly, truly exciting for this area to be able to have that. And in addition, we were able to host the American Junior Golf Association Junior All-Star Event in August at the Urbana Country Club. 78 players from 18 states with the economic impact of that one event is $217,000. We've also been actively involved and will continue to be as economic responders for the future with ongoing discussions of the Yards Project, the Rantool Family Sports Complex, the Kickapoo Rail Trail, and many other projects that will sustain our economy and be quality of life for our residents. So when people ask, how are we addressing the budget shortfall? We have a 40% cut in our budget based on both state hotel tax revenues and local hotel tax revenues. We're turning to the foundation that we had created, which is to develop philanthropic support for V C C to meet the mission of promoting a welcoming destination experience for visitors to strengthen economic opportunity and enhance the lives of residents. We are going to work through the foundation to create additional private partners that will help offset the budget and will continue to help us do the work that we are doing on behalf of the community. When we kick off this campaign in October, we're going to be showing this video. So why are we doing this? If you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people want to work. And if you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where business needs to be. And if you build a place where business needs to be, you'll build a place where people have to visit. This is our community and we are a major part of the solution. I want to thank you on behalf of the Visit Champaign County Board, Visit Champaign County Foundation Board, and the Visit Champaign County team who serve the residents of Urbana every day. I also want to give a shout out to Bridget, who does an excellent job as being a your representative on our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Dan, did we want to do anything else? Or Steph, did you have a follow-up to introduce what we're considering further? Or shall we go to council?
Staff is just recommending that you approve this resolution.
Okay, Dan. You're muted, Dan.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jane DeLuce and Visit Champaign County. For the past six months, V C C has worked in partnership with the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce, the Urbana Business Association and our own city staff, and they have worked tirelessly to support, you know, not only the hospitality industry and the tourism industry, but every business, large and small, in this community. And this team has just been amazing in their ability to, you know, respond to, to the weekly changes, the daily changes that came our way. And every time a need arose, every time something new came along, that team just was working seamlessly to address it in response. So the, one of the reasons our county, our city, our community is doing relatively well in terms of resilience and navigating this pandemic is because of the partnership that we have with organizations like V C C. So thank you, Jane.
All right. Council members, are there any questions for Steph or Jane? Mary, who?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say that one of my favorite events is the Restaurant Week. I think I end up going to a different place every night, so I'm really happy to hear that you guys have been thinking creatively in terms of how to do that for the next year. And you guys always do a really nice job of putting videos together. So thank you for all your hard work.
Any other questions for staff or Jane before we go to a motion and discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I would ask for a motion. Dennis.
Yeah, thanks. Um, this is part of the discussion.
Dennis, we need to get a motion in a second on the ordinance before we go to discussion. Anyone going to make a motion and or a second so we can discuss this? Bill Brown?
Yes, I was trying to find the ordinance number. I don't see it in this latest memo, but I'll move. We send the V C C partnership agreement ordinance to the city council with recommendation for approval.
Just for the record, that's resolution number 2020-09-046R. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sharice, I heard you first. So it's a motion from Bill Brown and a second from Sharice. All right, so we have a motion in a second. I will take council discussion. Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks very much. What a very excellent presentation. I appreciate that, Jane. I think that the Visit Champaign County program has been very strong, extremely well organized under your leadership. I think that's true that the videos are top-notch and very excellent. I think that's true that the videos are top notch and very excellent. I was kind of wondering when I'd see an image of downtown Urbana in the last video. I didn't notice anything that related to downtown Urbana. Which brings up a concern of mine. My understanding right now is that our staff and the mayor is in conversation with the Urbana Business Association. Considering. Changing the contract or seeking to change the contract with the UBA to. To terminate it or to re discuss it. For the for the purpose of shortening our contract and reevaluating it in December. And that this conversation went on. Without presence of any of the board members of the UBA, just the director. And that I think that that I'm concerned and I think some of the board members have talked to me about their concern. Of the city's strong support for our own Urbana Downtown Business Association. And this concern. The thing which I think understand is based on pretty significant facts. Is a concern for me because on my word, I represent the downtown business area. Of course, I don't own it. It's a concern for the entire city council to. Have a vibrant interaction with our own business community and to support it in every way possible. So while I I respect and I expect to support ultimately. Our interaction and our continuing work with the UBA. When I'm at this time learning that potentially the own our own Urbana Business Association is about to be dismembered. I find it time to pause to find out whether we should first. Find out more specifics and have a presentation about our relationship with the UBA as staff and the mayor is. Progressing toward. Before we choose to support the county. And therefore, I'd like just to hear from the mayor. At our next committee of the whole meeting or whenever she would like to. To make a presentation concerning what her vision is for the future of the UBA. Before we make a decision to approve this, I think, very significant and important relationship with Visit Champagne County. So, I mean, I'm willing to. Have a discussion right here about whether, you know, this is a concern of any other person on the city council. But I'd really like to get a presentation about the UBA and its future from the mayor before voting on this. And so I'd like to, and this is, you know, I'm sorry to say. This is significant enough problem for me that I'd like to make a motion to defer this topic to our next. Committee of the whole so that the mayor has an opportunity to share with us her vision for our own business association in Urbana. So I'd like to make a motion to defer. And we take one other person to agree with me to just place this on the agenda for our next committee of the whole.
Hey, I've got a motion from Dennis. Is there a second in support of that motion?
I'll second it because I I've got similar concerns that Dennis has without taking that much time. I echo his sentiments.
Okay, so it's a motion and a second to defer. To the next meeting and I believe that's all we need. I don't think we need a vote on that. So this.
Looks like the mayor had.
I recognize her, Sharice. I'm just letting the folks know that. Under council council rules, a motion, a second to defer is all that is needed to defer a agenda item to whatever meeting. They have specified, we're specifying the next committee of the whole meeting to bring this issue back up. Diane, did you want to say something?
Sure. Yeah, you're right. We're having discussions with the UBA. Again, it's COVID related pandemic related. In terms of what Urbana Business Association is facing currently and what the next few months look like in terms of ability to generate revenue. I would point out though that in years past, this has come up before in terms of. You know, what does UBA do versus what Visit Champagne County does and what? It's always been noted that Visit Champagne County has a regional focus. Whereas Urbana Business Association has a specifically Urbana focus and mostly downtown Urbana focus, which is very important. So. The two organizations are complementary, but it's not usually, it's not a question of either or. And again, during this pandemic, during the last six months. UBA, VCC, EDC, and the chamber have worked just amazingly well together. So. So it's not a question of either or. And we are exploring options for the organization. We're in very, you know, conversations with the director of UBA to see what he wants to go. Nothing's been decided yet. We're trying to figure out what options to bring to the city council. So it's not like this is being done. You know, to this, this is just one of these situations. Related to COVID where we're trying to figure out what direction we're going. And if Carol, Carol wants to add anything to that, I'd appreciate the giving her the opportunity to jump in as well.
Um, I would just say that adding on to what the mayor had had commented is. I mean, we absolutely do need to talk about UBA, but the circumstances are completely different. And and it's worth, it's absolutely worth an in-depth conversation, but. The what we're what we're doing with UBA and the conversations with the director are trying to do what's in the best interest of Urbana businesses. It is not. It's in the long-term best interest of of everyone involved and. And I guess that's all I'll say right now until we have the details of the UBA in front of us. It's not about dismembering the UBA.
Yes.
Yeah, my my concern was that the council. You know, the city staff is talking with the director, but he's not engaging the board and the board's made up of the business people themselves.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, any final comments from any other council members on this before we move on to the next item? Bill Brown.
I guess I'd just ask Phyllis or Jim to weigh in. I know we have the deferral rule for regular council meetings when final action is. Is up. I don't know if the same deferral rule applies with committee of the whole meetings. I don't remember it being used before.
Yes, it does, Bill.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Confirmation from the clerk, the motion to defer in the second is what we need to get it. So we will see this come back before council at the October fifth. Meeting, sorry, Bill Cobrook and Julia, I saw you guys reach your hands. Cobrook, go ahead.
I just have a question. Is this time sensitive at all? The, you know, I agree once again with Dennis. I think the other business Champagne County is an excellent organization. I think the presentation tonight was excellent. Is 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 a deferral going to harm anything? Is is there a time sensitive element to any decision that we would make?
I can let Jane pop in if what I state is incorrect, but. They have been operating without any contribution from the city since July one as typically. Typically, this agreement would go from July one till June 30th. So I would imagine that they would appreciate having that contribution as they have been working hard during that period.
In addition, if I could just add, we also don't have any money from the state. So we are, our cash cash flow is very low.
Okay. Julie? Got your hand raised?
Oh, just a thought to put out there. I think. This might be a nice opportunity for us to have another type of listening session, talking about different opportunities for public input if appropriate. Prior to decisions about UBA because we can't be out there as as easily seeing people. And business owners, you know, that if maybe something we could keep in mind, it would be an opportunity to hear from some more people because I know I've also gotten some emails and it. But it's by no means comprehensive.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, um. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. Just for clarity, this will come back up before council on the October fifth committee of the whole meeting. All right, next we have resolution number twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero four seven R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with JAG and Deputy Chief Searls is here with us to present.
Good evening, everyone. This resolution is regarding the FY twenty Edward and Burton Memorial Justice Assistance Grant or JAG. What this is is essentially an administrative act. That allows the Urbana Police Department to receive nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and fourteen cents. Three percent of that would be peeled off and be submitted towards the countywide switch over to the National Incident Based Reporting System or NIBR. So the city of Urbana would ultimately get nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. This JAG fund monies would go towards the purchase of a new record management system or RMS, which is referred to as New World. And the anticipated cost of that is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Essentially, what this is is administrative in nature, just approving an agreement with the city of Champagne. They are the actual. Folks that applied for the grant and we are a sub recipient. So I think the memo is fairly straightforward. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to help however I can.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any questions from council or Deputy Chief Searls? Okay, Sharice, you have a question?
Yes, Rich. Is the New World, the records management system, is it software? Or is it hardware or both or?
The answer is both, but the part that we're going to pay for is software. So. Our current record management system is about thirty-five years old. It's called ARMS. And it's reached the end of its its, you know, its life. And so it's time to replace it. And so we're looking at actually a countywide solution. So it would include the city of Champagne, University of Illinois, the sheriff's office, et cetera, et cetera. The hardware is physically going to be located in a city of Champagne facility. But yeah, it's both, but this hundred and fifty thousand is going to be software cost for us.
Wow. Okay. So the nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents goes towards the New World?
That's correct. Towards that bill is about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and then about three hundred dollars goes towards NIBR's?
That's correct.
Okay, and how how long? Do do we anticipate being able to use this particular software?
Oh, the life expectancy of the software, it's it's my guess is it's probably going to be good. And this is probably a better question for Sanford House. My guesses would be north of of ten or fifteen years for sure.
Okay.
So some of that depends on IT support.
Does that include updates and so on and so forth? The the cost that hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
So basically. The New World is going to be replacing ARMS.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to, and so in ARMS, the software itself is obsolete?
Right, that has to do with the hardware that it's being housed on. They. It's been compared to like a B twenty-nine bomber. We just don't have mechanics to repair it anymore because it's just so old.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dries, any other questions from council? Okay, if not, Mary else who?
I was just going to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
All right, um, I move resolution number twenty twenty zero nine zero four seven R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement JAG with recommendation for approval to city council.
And I'll second it.
That's a motion from Mary else Wu, second from Bill Cobrook. Just for clarity, we're only voting on accepting. This portion of this award, we are not voting on the new system itself. A hundred and fifty thousand for that system. This is just a vote on accepting an award which can be applied towards that. All right, any discussion amongst council? Sharice?
When when should we anticipate? Getting the New World? And and well, and paying for it.
Yeah, so one of the one of the things that we're doing right now is we're selecting various modules that we want to attach to sort of the base program. We had a meeting about that maybe a week or two ago. The the rollout period, as I understand, it's about eighteen months from the time we inked the contract. So our hope is that we can get going in earnest on a new world towards the end of this year, this calendar year.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion questions? All right, if not, Phyllis, would you please call the role on the vote for this?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. That resolution will be sent to the full council meeting with a recommendation for approval. All right, next up we have ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero four eight and ordinance approving a special use permit. Or one for nineteen eleven East Main Street for the Champagne County Humane Society coming from Plan Case. Number two four zero three dash U dash twenty. Marcus Ritchie is here to present.
Evening, council. I would like to share my screen if I can. Okay. The Champagne County Board and Champagne County Humane Society are jointly requesting a special use permit. To allow the Humane Society to construct a new training building, to expand their existing building and to operate an animal shelter in both buildings. Champagne County owns the underlying fifty-one acre parcel and the Humane Society releases three acres. On which the existing animal shelter and its grounds are located. The proposed special use permit would apply to only the three acres at the. According to section seven seven A, the. In any zoning district, city council may authorize a special use permit for the construction, expansion or alteration of any structural or use by a public service entity. For a charitable or philanthropic use. On June fifteenth, nineteen eighty-seven, the city council passed ordinance number eighty-six eighty-seven ninety-seven. Granting the original special use permit to the county board and humane society to construct and operate an animal shelter. And they used this same section of the zoning ordinance for the this original special use permit. The area subject to the proposed special use permit lies directly south of the US Army Reserve Complex. You can see the existing land uses around the Humane Society tract of the land. This slide shows the zoning of the parcel, which is R four, medium density, multi-family residential. Most of the land around the parcel is also R four. There is some conservation reserve education to the southwest. And Weaver Park is zoned between R three and R four. Looking at the comprehensive plan. It shows this area and everything in blue as a future land use designation of institutional and a Weaver Park as a future land use designation of park. The proposed special use permit would allow for the expansion and modernization of the Humane Society's shelter facility. Enabling it to expand staff size and training, animal assessment and training and programming for the general public. Table two in the staff report goes through the existing and proposed activities and where they would occur in the new configuration. The zoning ordinance requires that stormwater detention for projects. The zoning ordinance requires that stormwater detention for projects of this size be provided on site. Uh, if that were done according to the zoning ordinance, it would require a renewal of additional mature trees. Part of the application is that, uh, they request that the stormwater detention be allowed to be created west of the leased track on land that is also owned by the county, for which the county has already given permission. The staff report goes through the criteria for a special use permit. Uh, the proposed expansion of use would continue to be conducive to the public convenience of this location. Uh, the proposed expansion of use would continue to be operated so as not to be injurious or detrimental to the R four zoning district or to the general public. And the proposed expansion of use will continue to conform to the regulations and standards of and preserve the essential character of the R four zoning district. The staff findings are summarized in the staff report. And finally, moving into recommendations. Uh, at its September tenth twenty twenty meeting, Plan Commission voted with six ayes and one refusal to forward this case to city council with a recommendation to approve the request as submitted. Staff concurs with this recommendation and adding one condition, that construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan. Um, that was included as an exhibit in the packet tonight, as well as, um, attachment one of the draft ordinance. And also staff recommend that if the special use permit is granted, that city council should revoke the original special use permit granted in ordinance number eighty six eighty seven ninety seven, as all of the activities permitted in the original permit are also included in the requested permit, and it would just clean things up. That is the end of the staff report. Mary Tiefenbrun, the executive director of the Champagne County Humane Society is here tonight, and she is also available, uh, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. Uh, we, we couldn't hear you super well. Uh, you were pretty quiet, but we could almost hear everything, so, uh, apologies if questions come that we weren't able to hear you from. All right, uh, are there any questions from council members for Marcus or for the Humane Society? Uh, Jason, could you pop the, uh, screen share off so I can see the gallery view? Thank you. Uh, Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, would this training be for, uh, anybody that owns a dog or is thinking about owning a dog or is it, um, or, or other animal? Or is it just for those adopted at the Humane Society or the animal control? But so will it be advertised to the general public and what kind of traffic increase do you expect?
Speaking from what I know from the application, uh, the proposed, um, activities would be in general scope and size similar to what is going on now. I will defer to, uh, Mary Tiefenbrun to respond to whether general space would be available to the general public or simply for those that are, uh, having animals dealt with through the Humane Society.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, the current plan is to, um, use the facility to offer dog training classes much as we do now. Um, only now we have to find space elsewhere. So those classes are open to the public to register with their dogs to come for training or puppies. And, um, we try to keep our classes at a reasonable cost so that, um, so that they're affordable to a wide swath of people. Um, and we hope with the building that we can expand the number of class sessions that we hold, um, and on an ongoing basis throughout the year. Um, other programs, um, may be developed depending on, um, availability of the space and, and time that we have. But we currently don't have any plan like for just sort of general open to the public, people to come and bring their dogs and play or anything like that. But, um, we do want to offer as many dog training opportunities as we can, and we hope to expand our repertoire of classes offered.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mary Alice?
Marcus, I, uh, I was hoping that I didn't miss it, and maybe it's, uh, just wasn't included in my packet, but I don't see an actual ordinance in the packet. Now, I didn't, I didn't look online to see if it's attached there, but I assume there's an ordinance with this because it says approve the ordinance or amend it.
Yes, there is supposed to be an ordinance with an attachment. I could share the screen if you would like with that document.
Well, I can, if it's, if it's up online, I can, I can go ahead and, and print it. The reason I ask is because I was just trying to figure out, you had mentioned that, um, we should repeal the older special use permit. And I, I was trying to look and find it. Is that the language in the ordinance? Is that it's repealed as well? Is that how it's repealed?
Um, I might have used the word revoke, um, but if repeal is the, the correct word, then we can change it for that.
Well, I'm not sure what the correct word is. I just wanted to look and see what it said, but certainly I have time to track it down before we do a final vote on it.
I just did a quick look through the documents, Mary Alice, and I was actually going to ask the same question because I didn't see the actual ordinance in the materials that were provided to us either. There's the memo and there's all the exhibits, but not the actual ordinance itself.
If it's helpful, I will, uh, get that and email it to you for those that are in front of a computer.
Sure, Lori, that, that'd be great. Uh, Dennis?
Um, yeah, I received a copy of it. It's attached, uh, at the very end of the city memo. When I downloaded it, so it was the last three or four pages.
Well, given that we don't have the actual, I'm sorry.
Page, page eleven and twelve.
Page eleven and twelve? No. I, I, I didn't download the, I just followed the link that was in the memo, but I sure don't see it in there. But pray it, you did it to us here shortly. Uh, yes, Mary Alice?
I was just going to say, given that we don't have the actual ordinance in front of us, I would be okay making a motion with no recommendation to city council, which would give us an opportunity to look at the actual wording of the ordinance. Um, so I guess I'll move ordinance number twenty twenty zero nine zero four eight, an ordinance approving a special use permit nineteen eleven East Main Street, Champagne County Humane Society, Plan Case number twenty four zero three SU twenty, with no recommendation for it to city council.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll do that. I'll second it.
Okay, that's a.
And I was, and I was in error. I was looking at the wrong ordinance when I commented that I had received it, so.
Okay. That's a motion from Mary Alice and a second from Dennis to forward with no recommendation. Uh, is there any further comments, uh, questions or discussion for council on this? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Uh, Phyllis, if you could call the roll for the votes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. That motion passes. Now that ordinance will go to, uh, council with no recommendation. And we will hopefully get the ordinance to be able to sort that out and ask any further questions we have at the next meeting. All right, that brings us to our eighth item, which is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero four nine R, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, chapter two, section two dash four. Uh, there were issues brought up from council about the availability of, uh, the documentation for this, uh, to the public and it not being available. Uh, it's still not hyperlinked in the memo. Uh, we also had issues noting that the description was not, uh, sufficient if it was actually being presented at a city council meeting for, uh, consideration. And, uh, we would, uh, is, uh, encouraged that, uh, we can have discussion on this this evening, uh, but that we want the public to know that no final actions can be taken, uh, on this item as it has been, uh, presented. I'm not sure if Jim wants to let us know or the clerk wants to let us know because of that fault, if we can even, uh, send it to council, if there's going to be a vote on it, uh, I don't, I'm not sure what are, where we're at because of that, uh, because of that loss. Uh, Jim, I see you popped in. You want to let us know what we can and cannot do with not having, uh, proper description on there?
Uh, the description for a committee of the whole meeting is sufficient. Uh, the rule on descriptions in the Open Meetings Act, as well as two pack opinions, provide that the detail of the description, little more than this, um, is when an item appears on an agenda for final action consideration. You can't adopt this tonight anyway. It's no different than any other ordinance you would have to send it, if you were inclined to do so, onto council with or without a recommendation. I think that answers your question.
Sure, so we can still vote on it, uh, to send it with or without recommendation or with or without changes, uh, because we're not taking final action, even though the description is insufficient.
Right.
Sufficient for this one, but not for the next one.
Right.
Okay. All right, um, so I guess, uh, Diane, did you want to go ahead with a presentation or, uh?
Sure, thank you. And this is a committee meeting, so that's why this is brought to committee for discussion. This is the equivalent of our study session, just so the public knows. Um, before I started, I, um, I do want to apologize to Benjamin Stone. I did, um, use a gender specific, um, way to address him last week, and that was inappropriate. And I, I apologize for that, and I, I do take, um, a point with the folks who have been talking, mentioning, um, inclusivity in our city language, and so this, this would be a good ordinance to start with that, so we can make those alterations too as we go forward. Um, so, as, as we, as I mentioned last week in some introductory remarks, I'll, I'll repeat some of them this week. We value public comment, public input. It's a very, very important part of our meeting, and it's legally required by the Open Meetings Act. And we have always had a great deal of, um, public comment and very rigorous debate. And, um, we utilize that information to make decisions, to, um, inform votes, and to really initiate, um, projects and, and activities in the city. People have the right to speak. Um, the cities, um, also have the authority to, um, provide time, place, manner, restrictions related to public input, as long as it's content neutral. So our Urbana City Code, chapter two, sections two dash four establishes rules for public input for addressing city council boards and commissions. Um, we've modified these rules over time, over the years, kind of like our liquor code. It's been amended and, and tweaked and changed, um, over the years. The last modifications that were made were actually last September, when the former city clerk clarified some of the language, um, in this very section. There, some of the practices are actually listed in our city code. Some of our council rules are actually listed in our city code. Some of what we do in council meetings over the years have been long established practices, but aren't actually listed in the code. So I really think it's time for us to clarify the rules, particularly since we've now switched to remote meetings. All of our city code, all of the language related to public input was developed pre-COVID. And as you know, a lot of things have changed, um, since then. So I'd like to get some consistent guidelines in place, and as I mentioned last week, want to make sure that we have the time within our city council meetings to actually debate and deliberate. We have many, many very large challenges facing us today. We have to continue to provide the essential programs and services. Our top priority is to get the business of the city done, and we can only do it in the context of an open meeting. City council members cannot meet outside of this, of a venue like this, when, with more than two people. And so we have to provide space for, for deliberation and consideration and thoughtful consideration. But the, the issues that are facing us today are going, are, are very, very significant. Um, and we are responding to many of the demands, the requests, the questions that the public has raised over the past few months with regard to public well-being, safety, and policing. Be, um, just because they aren't discussed every week at a city council meeting does not mean that work isn't going on within city staff behind the scenes. It takes time to bring these things forward to get them to the point where it's ready for council consideration. The other thing that I wanted to focus on was, was the tone of our council meetings. And the, as I mentioned, the, um, over the past few months, the increasingly hostile atmosphere that's been created in our meetings, and it has discouraged people from participating. And people have told me that, um, people want to participate, but they are afraid of becoming a target themselves. And that's exactly the opposite of what we want in our council meetings and what we've generally had in our council meetings. We're all under a lot of stress in this community, and our council meeting should not add another layer of anxiety to that community's stress. So I've proposed, uh, some changes to city code. This isn't, isn't the complete, isn't the complete code, but some of the changes that are being proposed are primarily for the verbal input part of our meeting. I'm recommending we have a standard practice of up to three minutes per person versus five. And that we have an, up to an hour of public input at a council meeting. I've been calling around to different communities, trying to survey what other cities are doing generally. And several, and a council member or two have sent around some examples from other cities as well. What you're seeing is, um, public input as short as twenty minutes in some place. Um, generally, most cities are in the, uh, thirty minutes to an hour range for total public input and three minutes versus, um, five minutes. Um, I really think it's important that comments be addressed to the council at a whole and not directed toward individual council members as, as we've seen, or individual elected officials or, um, board and commission members, or even other members of the public. We really do want to give people an opportunity to speak, and, um, three minutes would allow more people that opportunity within the given hour of time. We've always asked that if there's a group of people who have, um, if you want to say similar things, that they appoint a spokesperson for that group, that will help move things along well. These are intended to, um, clarify, provide some flexibility, for example, in our meetings and, but to clarify our rules of engagement. And the email input, we of course still accept email input, and that can, is incorporated into the record. People can write, people can call council members, and council members, of course, are encouraged to engage constituents outside the meeting. That's part of your job as a council member is, is, is constituent engagement. So, so this is an, an opportunity to clarify our rules, to make them more predictable, and to, um, particularly tailor them to the meeting format that we find ourselves in today. And we're looking ahead. We're going to be in some form of a remote meeting, a Zoom meeting, probably for the next year at least. Even if we return to some in-person meeting, I, I, I'm predicting, I expect that some council members will feel more comfortable not meeting in person until this, we're through this pandemic. So, so we've got a, an opportunity, and I think an obligation, to, um, settle on rules for this particular meeting format and focus on something that will get us through at least the next year or so.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, any questions for Diane from council members? Or the city legal department staff, et cetera? Mary Alice, go ahead.
Um, so one thing that I've been thinking a lot about is one of the, um, consequences of the pandemic is that we've had to shift and change with, um, how we conduct meetings virtually. And so I, I feel like we, we haven't been as consistent as we should be. And so I, I feel like we, we haven't been as consistent as we should be because we've been learning as we go. So I think it's good for us to be able to write down something that does give the public consistency in terms of how to provide public input. But I guess my question is why are we changing the city code for all meetings rather than having fully electronic meeting kind of guidelines?
You mean board and commission meetings?
For any type of public input where the, the meeting is 100% virtual and, and I'll give you an example. So, so one thing that I was thinking about was when we normally are in person, people come in, they fill out a form, they check the box. It says, you know, I'd like to speak during public input at the time of the agenda or I prefer not to speak, right? So they're given three different options and then we kind of progress from there. Well, that really isn't something that we've been doing virtually because it's, it's difficult to do that virtually. But I'm wondering if we should come up with something that is similar to that and basically that's customized to virtual, 100% virtual meetings.
Are you asking if you, we should have public input at the time of each specific agenda item or give that opportunity?
It actually a little bit broader, so I guess what I'm saying is we have these rules in the code that you've proposed. I'm wondering rather than go ahead and rewrite just in general all public comment, if we should just have kind of here's how we conduct a virtual, a fully virtual meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
That, that's what I'm trying to figure out is that direction.
That's an option. I do think it's important to have consistent rules across all different types of meetings, include, including the board and commission meetings. Not just city council and committed the whole meetings. So whatever we decide for council and committee should be applicable to boards and commissions as well.
Well, I thought one of the suggestions from the public which was, which was interesting was giving people the ability. We've been changing how we've been doing email public input, all the public input is included in the, in the meeting minutes. But I like the idea of having somebody, if they want to have, you know, a couple of words said spoken, that they would have that option in addition to just having something, so that way it's read to everybody. I thought that that was a good suggestion, so that's what I'm trying to think about is how do we basically equate what happens in person versus what happens virtually? So that's, I think, I think that that should be part of the conversation, what direction we're going to go.
Thanks Mary, I'll, two, two suggestions about trying to incorporate our general rules that were from in-person meetings and also maybe creating separate rules for electronic meetings, separate from changing the entire city code. Okay, other questions for staff and/or the mayor? Go ahead Dennis, then Bill, then Shriise.
There are probably more than one, but I'll just, I just was noticing on, at the end of section two, there's new information about deferrals. And it seems that the suggestion is that, that the council members can defer something two times. And my understanding is that usually when we do a deferral, it's really just a single deferral to the next similar meeting. I'm wondering if mayor can comment about the addition of an item on the agenda to a second time, a second time with deferral.
Well, that wasn't actually an addition, the language that's crossed out actually was, this, this is basically a, an interpretation or a translation of the language that was crossed out. I had asked Jim Simon to simplify the language so that it was actually more understandable than what was written. So this possibly came from, this language was in the city code. It may have been what Charlie Smythe had worked on in the previous version of this, but it's not an addition. It's simply a translation of what's there already.
Alright, Bill Brown, you're next and then Shriise.
I guess I disagree with that because the original was, it would take a three, four, three quarter vote to consider it at a special meeting to be called held before the day to the next regular meeting. So before you could have a three quarter vote to, to consider before the next special, before the next council meeting, using a special meeting. And under the rewrite, the three quarter vote would be to defer it a second time, so it seems like it's really two different things.
I'll let Jim address that.
You're right, Bill, in drafting it, it's given the situation we're operating under. It gives the council more flexibility in terms of a second referral. If you're unable to meet for the next meeting, then what happens? There's no default really on that because it's been deferred. The new language was intended, the ad that you're suggesting or expansion you're suggesting, you know, you are correct, it is an expansion. But it's intended to give the council more flexibility in, to when they want to defer a second time if at all.
Thanks Bill, Shriise, you're up next and then Bill Colbrook.
I guess when I was looking at it, we're going to keep the, the order of the meeting the same. We're keeping the order of the meeting the same. So we'll still have input before presentations or during presentations or after.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't add another public input portion of the meeting just before adjournment specifically to give the, you know, presiding officer the flexibility depending on how, what, what was happening at a particular meeting. So if all the input can, you know, wanted to be done at the beginning, that's fine. If you had a whole lot of people wanting to speak to specific agenda items, it might be necessary to put some at the end. But this, this in the code could be left more general in the set of council rules. Most communities have a separate set of rules, they're not in the city code, but there are rules for the, you know, just a set of rules and procedures that folks can follow. And, and that could be included in that, so it's to give people the option to do either.
Okay, so what I mean, I guess what, when we, when we had that one meeting that had, where we had two separate input time, I was, I'm just gonna say this because I, I really thought having, having the input at the end of the meeting gave people who were listening and attending the meeting virtually, opportunity, somebody's got a speaker on. The opportunity to actually be more informed, especially if we were talking about all, you know, any, if we were discussing anything during the meeting that they were going to be, they wanted to talk to, talk about. And I thought, I just thought that, I don't know if folks felt more informed with that format or, or what. So that, because we may have, you know, answered many questions that they may have had about a particular agenda item. And that's, I was, you know, I was wondering if there is a any way that that would be an issue, where, does anyone else have an opinion about input at the end of the meeting?
We'll save questions for council for discussion, we're just asking questions of the mayor and staff right now.
I can answer your question if you felt that that was important to add that second public input at the end of the meeting, it certainly could be done. This is a discussion tonight, so.
Okay, Bill Colbrook, you're, you're heading up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that second deferral. I, I think because of the, you know, the weight and the gravity of the issues that we're dealing with on a weekly basis, the fact that our, our meetings are already packed with agenda items. I just think that second deferral gives us another very, very good option, you know, to defer something, you know, down the path. Because we, we still would recognize that it's important to talk about, but we're, we're just able to, to push it to a meeting that we're going to have more opportunity to discuss, you know, those issues. Because, you know, we've, we've experienced already where something very, very important has come up and it's already passed the 10 o'clock hour. Matter of fact, we took a, a very, very important vote one time, you know, it's 10 minutes, three minutes till 11. And we were all exhausted. I, I think that this one simple rule just gives us more opportunity, more flexibility to be able to discuss important items when, when we've got a little bit more time to do so.
Thanks Bill, I saw Bill Brown's hand come up and then Julie.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the question about the language saying mayor, presi, presi, mayor or presiding officer versus just presiding officer. Seems like the main place where mayor or presiding officer is used is in the providing warning to speakers that use abusive, personal threatening or defamatory language. And then most other places it's presiding officer. So is there, was there, is that, was that a conscious decision making some places mayor or presiding officer? Which I guess, when the mayor is the presiding officer, you wouldn't have to say mayor. So when you're saying mayor or presiding officer, you're saying that during a committee of the whole meeting, either the mayor or presiding officer could intervene, is that right? So it sounds like it was a conscious decision. Okay, I think that answers my question.
Well, Julie and then Dennis.
Um, sure, this is, I think we'll leak into when we have a discussion, but this is about ensuring people that their emails will be read and how, how to ensure that they could, would be attached to the minutes. I know that on the current just instructions to the public, it's this very, you know, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting or something like that. And so, but I know, I note that in this it's, there's no timeframe. So I just wondered if that had been thought out yet and then I had a suggestion of possible language that might be appropriate.
We didn't, it hasn't been added into here, we're kind of working within the structure of what was already in the code. So if that's something that, and, and it's some, you know, that's another case of where is that going to be a permanent part of all meetings? Or is this the Zoom remote meeting format in terms of emailed input? And how we treat email input going forward, so that's something to decide.
Well, and apologies Jared, if you want me to wait and, and say this until a little bit later, but I just want to reflect something that I've been hearing a lot is an understandable concern that people aren't feeling heard in, in a lot of us in different contexts, but in these contexts in particular. And having the Zoom meeting, we don't even get to see each other in person and then emails sort of going into this black box. I think that whatever we can do to, and I've been trying and I know I'm new, so, but I've been trying to, you know, let people know. I read your email, thank you, and if I have a follow-up question, I've had a couple of people tell me not to waste their time. So I choose not to respond to them, but for those other, I've had some very nice exchanges and follow-up conversations with people as a result of that. So I, I don't know, just, just thinking that way of what is it that we can be doing as a councilman, as individuals to help people ensure that we are definitely reading, listening to and taking their public input into consideration with each meeting.
And pre-COVID, of course, people emailed comments and I know we as council members always read them. Made a point to read them all personally, but they were not read into the record or entered into the record. So, so when we switched to the Zoom meetings, that's one of the first things that the city clerk did and, and that's, some, some cities that I surveyed, they only take email input. They do not take verbal input. For example, the city of Danville does not do verbal input, all their input is by email only. So emails have suddenly become much more important in remote meetings as far as how it's, how it's recorded or incorporated into the meeting record.
Alright, Dennis, you were up next and then Mary else?
Yes, uh, if the, if the individual, the public wanted to present a little slideshow, a presentation with images or something to the council as part of their input. Are we allowing for that and would we allow, I, I think three minutes is not enough for some input. And I don't think I would prefer to go to just three minutes as standard, I, I think that some leeway should be made here for, for receiving public input and possibly getting public input in other ways than just verbal commentary. Are we allowing for shared screen use or is that too dangerous in, in the, in respect to Zoom bombing?
No, number seven still allows for a presentation by, an invited presentation by a member of the public. And I believe it's been up to 10 minutes in the past when we've had people come in and do that.
Okay, so that's not changing.
Thanks.
Um, so I, I agree with Dennis, I think that, that having right off the bat three minutes is too truncated, so I've been trying to think of a happy medium here. And so I was thinking rather than having 20, I think is our rule right now, where if you have five minutes unless there's 20 or more people. I was thinking of having 12 or 15 or more people wanting to speak, that would, then it would drop down to three. So, so basically we're dealing with three things, right? We've got, we've got the place, time and manner, those are the three things that, that we're talking about. And so the place here happens to be Zoom, so we have different items with Zoom. The time is both in how much time an individual is given versus how much time total we can have. And then the manner I think needs some discussion. I have some concerns about making sure that we don't infringe on people's freedom of speech. And I, I recognize that, you know, these are long public input sessions that we have that we hear from a lot of different people and some people are very passionate about what they think. See people have very strong opinions, but the difference between content-based, we just have to be sure that we're not blocking any kind of public comment with content-based. And so even if I don't like if people call me out and say something about me personally, that doesn't mean that I should prohibit them from saying it. So I just would like to have a conversation amongst council members in terms of what does that mean? So as, as I was looking at some of the cases that different people have sent, Jim, you sent some stuff about casework. Manner, the, I guess the best example of manner that I found was somebody can't bring a megaphone to city council and, and use it to give their public comment, that's kind of manner. In terms of Zoom, it might be somebody having some kind of sound in the background like a foghorn or something. I'm just making something up right now, so to me manner is different than content. And so we have to tease that out a little bit to make sure that, that everybody, that we're not moderating what people's content is. So those are my, those are the three things I wanted to talk about.
Thanks Mary Alice, responses may be needed for that in council discussion. I'm assuming Bill Colbrook, you were raising your hand to respond to that. But if, let's keep this in questions for the mayor and/or staff right now. And once we get to discussion amongst council, we can, we can have that discussion. Are there any more questions for the mayor's staff, Julie, and then I'll go back to you, Mary.
So I think that a lot of what we're specifically talking about are our experiences on city council. But recognizing that this would be helping ensure that rules were being set for all of the other many committees and task force and so forth moving forward. I think that's something to take into consideration too regarding time. And I wondered about Diane, if you had a sense from staff or from, or other people who are on, I'm on the traffic commission which doesn't seem to need to meet and I said it on some other things, but I know it must differ commission to commission, but thinking about that of like how to have again the clear, consistent rules that the public would recognize for all public meetings that are specifically agenda-driven meetings as opposed to a public input listening session, which would be, you know, a different set of. as opposed to a public input listening session, which would be, you know, a different set of, of things to consider.
Was that a question? Was there?
I'm sorry. That's the story. I apologize. Yes, the question is how much, like what I say is we're talking of what we heard in terms of public input today was concerned this particular body of people, you know, that limiting speech, you know, these concerns that people had. But we're also thinking about making a set of decisions about people who aren't here to give us that input. So that's what I wanted to hear. Be informed that you have heard or that you, that you have other council members have heard from staff and commission members and such on other bodies that are facing.
What we're hearing from other bodies, there is a need for a consistent set of rules and the same sort of expectations in those meetings as well. So that, so that, you know, the focus remains on the issues, not on the individuals that, that they have time to do the work of the board or of the commission, the same way we do at city council. Now in other communities, I think the Evanston example that you sent around, they had set different time, total, amount of total time set aside for public input was different for boards and commissions than it was for city council. But as far as expectations for, you know, civil respectful conversations, that was the same.
Okay, Mary Ellis, you were next and then Dennis.
I was just going to make a motion, but if, if Dennis has a question for.
Dennis.
It's something else that came up and just, I was thinking we should, I, I like to ask it, I guess. So there's been a concern about manner and about, you know, the comment about what is neutral content or content neutral, you know, so, and then, then there's questions about, so what do we mean by, you know, what's abusive language? What's a personal attack and what's threatening or defamatory? These are things we want to kind of steer away from or discourage the public for doing. And the reason being that you can make your point without being mean. So the question was, you know, do we have, do we have to identify, would we have to put definitions into the city code about what we're referring to? Or is this covered generally in like Robert's Rules of Order or, you know, I mean, I think that when I asked the, our city attorney said, well, you know, we can use Merriam-Webster's dictionary, you know, to figure that one out. So that's my question is how specific should we get onto this one issue, which is contentious in our community right now?
I'll let Jim address that.
The question you raised Dennis is a very, very common question when you're dealing with these kinds of prior restraints. Unfortunately, there is no bright line test as to what is abuse? What is harassment? What is threatening? Defamation's a little clearer, but the cases turn on specific facts. For example, and I'll use myself as an example. I have been alleged as being corrupt. That's imputation of a crime. I have been alleged to have committed illegal acts intentionally and with malice. That's imputation of a crime. I have been alleged to be unethical. That is not a crime, but it is clearly an illegal act that has the equivalent of criminal penalties. That clearly not only is defamation, and if it's spoken, it's slander. If it's written, it's libel. If it's recorded, as our meetings are, it is liable. But not only that, it is libel or slander per se. Which means the, you know, all one has to prove is that the statements were made, that they are in fact false or overstated, hyperbole. You don't even have to prove actual monetary damages. So defamation's a little bit easier. All one can say is whether it offends normal sensibilities. Talking about, let's say the police chief's handling of a particular matter or anyone else's, your handling of a particular matter. As Diane and several others have indicated, that can be done civilly and still convey the same concerns and information that the speaker wants to convey. Case law has held that restraints on those types of comments, abuse, harassment, et cetera, et cetera. That is not, that, that is not considered content. It's content neutral. Because a limitation on those abuses do not address the substance of the comment. If you have a concern about police using swear words or, you know, you know, calling people names, foul names, vicious attacks, that's not content. That's, that can be regulated. They still can talk about the police or the legal division or the city council or anyone else. They want to talk about public input. They certainly can provide and convey the information about which they're concerned about. Their viewpoints, their ideologies, their suggestions for how to solve problems and all. Those other forms of communication deal with tenor. And the cases are pretty clear that that kind of content, you know, those types of regulations, prior restraint regulations on speech are within the First Amendment, even under some pretty strict scrutiny standards. There are multiple levels of scrutiny that I'm not going to get into because you really get into the weeds. But as I've indicated, those types of regulations are clearly within First Amendment bounds. As long as they don't control the subject matter.
Okay, I understand. So it's the tenor of their delivery and sometimes even the choice of words is, are, is within the control of the speaker. And he can, the individual can choose to be under, do civil discourse or can, they can abuse, harass or slander an individual during the discussion. So so there might be what potential recourse for such an activity?
Uh, yeah, there is potential recourse, but the point is here with a, a rule or regulation or this draft ordinance, a municipality, a public body, even consistent with the Open Meetings Act and PAC opinions that relate to the Open Meetings Act. Cause they defer to the courts on what is content, what is content neutral? What is time, manner and place restrictions? The issue here is whether a public body can regulate by prohibiting the kinds of speech that are referenced in this draft. That's the issue. How, how a person chooses to speak is up to that individual, but the presiding officer has, or the mayor, which however you want to put it, depending on what the meeting is, who's chairing the meeting, has the authority to ask that person to cease that kind of activity. And that wouldn't be a restraint on that person's speech in violation of the First Amendment. And if the person refuses to do it, the presiding officer has the right to, in, in the Zoom world, mute the microphone in, in an in-person, ask the person to cease and desist and, and step away from the mic. And if the person refuses, the cases even PAC even allows the physical removal of a person who continues to abuse their right to speak.
And does a council member who feels that there is harassment occurring, but that the chair is not observing it or calling it? Can a council member then, what, address the chair to ask for action? Or that's, I guess, what it would have to happen because the chair has, is holding the mallet, basically, as you say.
That's right. The, the chair is holding the mallet. The members of the public body can bring that to the attention of the chair of that particular meeting. If the chair doesn't do anything about it, then the chair doesn't do anything about it unless the council votes to mute in the Zoom world or remove the person from the microphone in a in-person or even if, if they're being totally civil disobedient, removing them from the meeting.
Now I have one more question. I'm sorry, everybody. So the other topic that came up for for just, for, you know, in emails and interaction is that the individual who is choosing to address an agenda item so that they can speak, but never actually gets to an agenda item, they're really using the time to make a discourse that never actually touches upon the agenda item. What's the appropriate interaction or are there any kind of restrictions about that or guidance that we should be observing?
Well, the PAC has held, you can have, allow people to speak as you're suggesting on an agenda item. But the other rule is a much, or other approach is a much broader approach that the PAC recognizes that the individual has a right, the public has the right to speak on issues of public business. For instance, if somebody wants to come and complain about the bar down the street, just complain about the bar without getting to any point where the council might consider looking into that, whatever that activity is. That's not public business. If they're not bringing it for the council or the committee or the commission or the board to address, then that no longer is public business. You know, the forum is not just a, a soapbox forum for anything and everything that comes along. It does have to relate to public business. And that's why some communities have opportunities to speak at the beginning, you know, before the agenda items. So the council or the public body can hear the public's view of a part, on a particular group of agenda items. Sometimes they have public comment at the end to allow people to provide commentary on agenda items or any other thing that they are concerned about. And we've heard a lot about the public expressing their concern about Aliyah Lewis, even though that may not be specifically an agenda item. So it depends on your approach and there are benefits and detriments to both. To have public comment at the very end of a meeting, obviously they're as tired as you are. But any action items or committee items that have been moved on, the action or the, the, the voting has already occurred without the public input. And I happen to personally believe that the public deserves the right to comment on agenda items. And also how you split, if you do it all, that's a policy issue. That's not a legal issue.
Yeah, I agree. It's an important thing to think about. Well, thank you.
Mary Ellis Wu, are, are there, I'm assuming you're raising your hand to make a motion?
I, I.
Okay, just want to ask if there were any other comments or questions from council to staff before we take a motion? And I'm not seeing anybody's hands up. Okay, Mary Ellis, go ahead with your motion.
All right. Well, seeing as I already jumped the gun and tried to do discussion before I was supposed to, I will make a motion for ordinance number 2020 09049. Nornet's amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Two, Section Two Four, with a recommendation to keep it in committee.
Okay, that's a motion to keep in committee. Is there a second to the motion for holding in committee?
Sure, I would like to make that.
Okay, that's seconded by Dennis. We'll take discussion amongst council on the item with a motion to keep this in committee before we take a vote. Bill Colbrook.
I was just gonna respond to Mary Ellis on the, on our comments on whether we allow three minutes or five minutes per person. It kind of depends on how many people have their hand raised or how many people have a card submitted if we were in person. We've heard several comments about the importance of staying consistent, staying consistent from committee of the whole to committee of the whole, from, from this meeting to a council meeting. And then even, you know, across the fence to other meetings, you know, that the city holds as well. The problem I've got with the rule is we currently have it of if there is more than 20 people that intend to speak, then it's going to be three minutes. If it's less than 20 people, then it's as fighting, you know, five minutes. And I think I like what's proposed now because basically it's capped at an hour and it's capped at three minutes. What I have noticed since we've gone to the Zoom format, this even happened tonight. When Jared, you asked for, you know, how many people had their hand raised, there was eight people. Well, by the time that we got to that eighth person, we were already up to number 13. We'd actually got to number 14 until the number 14 person dropped off. And that happens meeting after meeting after meeting where people hold back, they don't raise their hand. We allow, you know, people to be having their five minutes of discussion. All of a sudden, on some meetings, we've, we've got beyond the 20 people. And that's why we've had two hours of comment. That's why our meetings have gone till 11 o'clock. And I think in order to stay consistent, we do not have a rule that says if X amount of people intend to speak, then we're going to give, give them X amount of minutes in return. I think we make it consistent. We set the time limit per person and we set the total amount of time for public input.
Thanks, Bill. Other discussion? Dennis and then Bill Brown.
I was actually kind of thinking that Mary Ellis Wu had a, a reasonable compromise that if, if 12 or less people, when we get to the 12th person, no more people have five minutes at all. The rest, anybody who else wants to, to talk has to do it just for three minutes. And we can have a cutoff time when we close public input for that evening. And so they have to be, and also, you know, we, we have a lot of people, some of them I think who live in the same complex or perhaps are sitting in the same room. Each, each want to, want to speak for five minutes on the same topic. Sometimes the text of their conversation is practically identical. And I, I hope we're like kind of past those kinds of public input, you know, sessions and are being more thoughtful now. But I want to be generous to, to a few, but I want to be less generous to the many. And I want to have a cutoff time. And I, that's the thing that I think is most fair to also to us so that we don't spend two-thirds of the meeting listening to the public comment and then having like, you know, 45 minutes to actually do our business, which is not serving the city or the rest of the community very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Bill Brown, you're next.
Yeah, I think I, I agree with Bill Colbrook about keeping it consistent at three minutes. For the same reasons, we just don't know how many people want us, want to speak when we start out. Like we did when we, when we met in person, we always knew because you had to fill out the slip beforehand. And there may be, I think for a while, we let people fill slips out a little late, but we even tried to stop that. So I, I agree with the consistency. I know three minutes can seem a little short if you have a lot to say. Really, email is, is the best way to, to reach us if you have a lot to say. I think if you really want to go into detail on something and we do read it. So, and from my understanding, so there's these restrictions as far as what you can, you know, the personal threatening, defamatory language, you could do that all in email because it's not part of the meeting. So apparently that's still permissible. You, the main goal is to maintain decorum in the meeting. Not offend people and actually try to encourage more public input because there have been people that have been put off by the tone of the public input and had had their hand raised, hand raised to speak on something and then decided not to. I think people need to realize that the main purpose of our meeting is to conduct city business. It's not a, it's not, the purpose isn't to be a public forum. We do have a limited public forum for purposes of getting input on our business. But there are a lot of other options for public forum, frankly, a lot more, there was a lot larger audiences, including Larry, the editors, you know, blogs, everything like that. including Larry, the editors, you know, blogs, everything like that. But I think I'm okay with an hour. It's unfortunate. I think there have been times when I started on council for years. I think really public input was something I always looked forward to and one of my favorite things about being on council, and I can't say that anymore. And that's a little discouraging. I'm not sure that the language in the current ordinance actually allows for the chair to allow public input at the time of the discussion. It seems to just say it has, you have to follow the order of the meeting. Which only has public input and presentations at the beginning. So ask people, as you, as Jim, to look at that, to make sure the language allows for public input at the time of the agenda item. I'm also still researching the language about abusive, personal threatening or defamatory. And I'm not real convinced that that's going to be very, it's not going to be easy to enforce. I think, you know, most of us probably recognize abusive input when we see it. So I I don't know if if both the mayor and presiding officer need to have the same ability to cut somebody off. I'm not sure exactly how that would work if they disagree. I don't know why the mayor couldn't just do what the other council members do and appeal to the presiding officer to discontinue. And the presiding officer could take into consideration that's the mayor. I think there there is some some level of training really that has to go into managing a meeting with these restrictions to make sure we all understand what is defamatory language. When does it become, when is personal too personal? I think people doing public input too need to consider if they could accomplish the same thing, but by not using names and just say, you know, especially if it's staff, it's really not fair to staff to pick them out. I think people that are elected more public figures who are more used to it, that staff members you could accomplish the same thing just by saying the city, the city did this to me, the city gave me a parking ticket, you know, not a specific officer or something. The city denied my request. I think it would go, it would it would strengthen your argument instead of detracting from your argument from by my making people wonder if something's just personal between you and that staff member. It would actually strengthen your argument to use the city instead of the name of the staff member. So I I think some of that's a learning process and hopefully as we go through it and have warnings, hopefully nobody will ever get cut off. Hopefully by by giving somebody a warning, it would be enough to get them to rethink how they want to say something. I think and generally, I think I'm going to be okay with this. I do kind of think that this is being done mostly because of the way we're meeting in COVID. So it is tempting to make us but separate the two. Although we don't know how long we're going to be meeting like this, so I guess you know, we could just change it again, or whoever's still around at that time could change it again if we go back to meeting in person. So I, so yeah, I I could go either way on that, but I think there's still a little bit of research to do. I I'd support keeping it in committee. I think I'd also would have supported just forwarding with no recommendation and and taking a week to consider. But either way.
Thanks, Bill. Other discussion, Julie?
Yeah, I've I recognize that we're a part of a long, ongoing conversation about politics and public speech and governance that's been going on since well before. Anything like the city of Urbana existed. I mean, this is always a push and pull that exists and I had a really enjoyable time looking through some research to see what best practices are sort of recommendations from a number of organizations around the country, nonpartisan. What, you know, nonprofit organizations that are trying to give citizens input on how they can best be you know, make their public input the most effective as well as recommendations for cities on how they can be sure to not be be able to balance the need to finish this work that's required by the city as by and continuing to ensure robust public input. And I think I have shared that with the council. And I shared it with some of the people who wrote to me today who are very I know upset about the possibility of these kinds of limits, but I do hope that if if anyone, I guess I'm saying this out loud too, is that if anyone's here listening and they want to email me, I'd be happy to share that list of of resources with you because it's, I think it's from across the country. It's it's a lot of different kinds of organizations, some, like I say, that are focused on citizen input and the city because the reality is we we are part of this community. And I think what has been such a shock and so sad for me when I came on the council was to see just how disheartened people are on all sides of this. You know, kind of people are feeling under attack in the community as a result of the global things that are happening, national things that are happening, local things that are happening. And the city council is also feeling under attack because of the hard work that they're trying to get done under a barrage of extremely challenging issues that nobody in a lot of cases has had to face before. And I think that if we can move forward on this with a sense of empathy for one another and where we are and you know, I'm all about Urbana love and I do believe you can say I'm naive and silly, but I'm telling you it makes a difference. If we approach one another in that respect or each one of us and our dignity, I think if we can look at it from that perspective, that we'll come to an agreement and it might be shaky for a little while, but I think it will improve how everybody's feeling week to week. Because I don't think you all should be dreading coming to this meeting writ large.
Thanks, Julie. Other comments? Mary Alice, Sharice, we heard from either you and a little and a little bit. I have some some of my own, but if you guys want to comment, I'll take yours first.
Um, I I'm just, I I guess, I guess what I want to say is I think that we we got the the proposed language on on Sunday night, I believe. And we've all been kind of doing some of our research, listening to input and so forth. And so that's one of the reasons why I want to keep it into committee so that we can make sure if we're really going to change city code, that it's the best that it can be. And I I do feel pretty strongly that we should have rules for one hundred percent virtual versus in person. But that's just my personal preference.
Thanks, Mary Alice. Any other comments? If not, go ahead, Sharice.
Still, okay. I guess the question that I, main question that I have is within that hour of 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 input to will will that include any emails that people may have wanted read during the input? Diane, I guess, I don't know who to ask.
At this point, no, the the emailed input would be incorporated into the meeting record, but they would not be read aloud. Okay, this is verbal input during a meeting.
So this is basically more about conduct to regarding input.
Thanks, Reese. Bill Cobro, I'd ask you to take chair for me so I can make some comments.
Let me unmute. Yeah, I'll take the chair. I recognize Jared Miller.
Thanks, Bill. So Mary Alice, I totally agree. I hadn't even thought about that in my consideration of this, but I think that what we do when we return to our in-person meetings should definitely be considered differently than what we're doing for Zoom meetings. I would much prefer rather than changing the city code that we develop a different, even if it's a subsection or, you know, a different section of this that when we're performing a meeting in this manner, that these are the rules that we will work on rather than changing the entire code and having to change it back. However, if that's not something everyone would be amenable to and maybe would prefer to change the the actual code itself, I think that at very least, we need to include language that the code applies to in-person meetings or Zoom meetings, so it's clear to the public. I'm not sure if that was in there. I didn't, I don't recall seeing that specifically said in there. I think that I disagree with some of the changes, but I'm not going to get into that. I think all of you know my position on restricting some of these things. I would be open to compromises on those, but alternatively, at least as far as considering comments at Zoom meetings versus individual ones, compromise also might be if people preferred to amend the city code instead that we include something in the ordinance that says, you know, these rules will remain in effect until the expiration of the governor's emergency order, which, you know, will effectively also signal the end of the rules that have his rules for for the Open Meetings Act and how we're able to operate under these meetings in the first place. So I would be open to something like that being included in there. And then we could take the issue back up again as a compromise between doing both sets of rules. So that was one idea that I had. I just, I think that Mary Alice, you had another great idea that, you know, we could have a number of people that gets five minutes and then after we reach a threshold, we could go down to three minutes for the remaining speakers. I don't think that that's a unreasonable thing. I would personally advocate that we continue with five minutes up to twenty, up to twenty people because I personally value that input probably more so than most of the council, but I understand that I'm I'm not the only person who gets to decide what what happens. But I do think that hearing from our constituents is, and the people we represent is one of the most important things that we do. You know, I I understand that the purpose of the public body is to do the business of the city as well. Business of the city is the business of the people, you know, we are municipal body that collects taxes and we're, you know, here to represent the voices in our in our community and, you know, putting the more restrictions we put on that, the more barriers we put in front of them. And it's just discouraging to folks who want to be able to communicate with us and communicate their ideas. I do understand the concerns about the manner in which people are addressing folks. I do think all of us having, you know, at least those of us who have been on, some of you guys who have been on for a long time, developed a, you know, thicker skin to understand, you know, that people get upset sometimes at us, especially when we ignore, you know, things that people keep bringing up over and over again, and we don't talk to them about it. We don't respond to them. We don't give them opportunities to participate in discussion. I think that a single city council meeting, you know, while some public bodies only meet, you know, every other week or once a month. You know, we're we're an energized body and I think that, you know, in my opinion, we're doing the least that we could do by meeting, you know, once a week and providing the input after providing it today. You know, I I feel like, you know, people go above and beyond the call of what is minimally asked of folks all the time. I'm sure we've all been in positions in our lives where we've gone above and beyond. And, you know, these are, you know, different times than what we normally deal with, you know, three years ago, we had a, you know, recordly short meetings where they were eight minutes long or ten minutes long and you know, it was easy to say, oh, well, you know, being on city council doesn't take a lot of time and effort. It's easy for us to, you know, do what we need to do and go home at the end of the day, but you know, the world's changed a lot since then. We have to deal with these very difficult issues. And I think that choosing to quell public input by putting a time limit such as an hour on total input at a meeting, it's just saying that we're willing to go and do even less than what the minimum was traditionally for public input. And I would rather see that we step up as leaders in our community and have more special meetings to do with these issues to, you know, bring more opportunities to the public to engage with them. I mean, I I put way more, way more hours in now than I than I ever used to. And I'm happy to do so now, you know, because this is what we're here for. This is what we were elected for. This is, you know, what people expect of us. And to tell them that, you know, well, you're getting in our way because we don't like being in our meetings for a long time, you know, that it just sends the wrong message in my opinion. So, you know, I I know we're going to keep it, probably the vote will pass to keep this in committee. We still have a lot to consider. I'm still very concerned as Bill Brown is about the language and how we're going to regulate that, you know, I I don't know how comfortable I would be. I think we're opening ourselves up for a lot of problems if we start to try to do that and whether or not we're applying, you know, those 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 restrictions in a content neutral manner and that we are not mistaking how we're doing that. If it is the will of the council that they want to put those rules in about how people speak at the meetings, then we've got to develop some kind of, you know, good explainer that's there on the website to tell people, here's the expectations for our meeting, you know, here's what we expect the public to do. We can't just, you know, most people aren't going to go into the city code and read the rules. You know, and putting it at the end of the agenda probably isn't, you know, that's people don't open up the agendas always, you know, and and read through the stuff. They they want to come and they want their voices to be heard. And we've got to do everything that we can to make them know. So if, you know, it is the will of the council, I would very, at the very, very least say that we've got to, you know, put something out there that thoroughly explains the city's legal position, how we're justifying what we're saying that we're going to do and how it applies to how it gets enforced at meetings. So that's one thing. Though I agree that, you know, the language and number, I guess it would five is crossed out because I believe that that section got added is four under section one and two for a subsection now four where it says mayor or presiding officer. I don't, I do not agree that the mayor should have authority to provide those warnings if we choose to accept that language during committee of the whole meetings. Those are meetings that are chaired by us. It's kind of our only opportunity to do what we need to do. Mayor gets to chair every other meeting. We share power in our form of government. And I don't think that the mayor should be able to do that in meetings that are kind of reserved for us to be able to hold hold that position in the committee of the whole meetings. So I I would not support that language being in there. These are, I'm just giving you, I'm sorry, there's so many, and I'm not a long age, you guys. I'm just trying to rattle off my thoughts on everything that I've heard everybody say thus far. So again, I would support, you know, compromises and discussion on these on these things, you know, we we all have to make these decisions together. But again, you know, I really want to stress, you know, that they can even considering doing some of these things and wanting to change these things because we want shorter meetings and, you know, all of that is just telling the, you know, telling the public that we don't want to step up and do the things that, you know, I feel like we need to be doing to handle these issues. When we say we want to handle the issues, let's handle the issues. Let's call more meetings. Let's bring the public input in. Let's show them we're willing to engage, not shut them up in order to be able to do what we need to do. That's that's the wrong way to go about it. And those are the extent of my comments. Bill, if you would bring the chair back.
So thank you for your comments and I yield the chair back to you, Jared.
Thanks, Bill. Any responses, Sharice? I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that regarding my idea about about public input at the end of the meeting, the main reason why I've thought that that was useful is as it seemed it to me that the language and with the people who had input seemed more deliberative. They actually, it wasn't so emotional. People seemed more informed because we had discussed the issues before. They, you know, were talking about the stuff that they wanted to talk about. And I think we actually hit on on some progress or whatever that we have made on certain things, just because we we, they got to hear us actually discuss you know, our our particular opinions before that time. I don't, I don't think a lot of folks understand that with with, we don't, you know, call each other and and have, you know, meetings amongst each other. We don't have city offices or anything like that. The only time that we actually get to discuss issues is when we are having a meeting. And 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 just like they And 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 just like they may be seeing it for the first time, sometimes we're seeing it for the first time too. And I I just thought that. And actually, I I wasn't talking about putting all input. I I had asked Diane about. There being two different times for input. So that I just wanted to correct that. What you said regarding that, because I I just felt it was it it gave. The the people who wanted to have some public input more information and they could. Be more informed or maybe maybe somewhere during the meeting, we may have even answered their questions. And that questions that they may have had, maybe we all had the same questions, you know, even so. I I just, I thought that I thought that was helpful, at least it was for me in the sense that. When when the input came through, they seemed to have. They brought up things that I hadn't thought of during during that discussion, you know. Just thought it was helpful. It was helpful for me. I thought it would be helpful for for the community as well to hear. What are what are our opinions are about certain things, maybe before. They have input about stuff too.
Thanks, Sharice. Diane?
Just wanted to say I serve on a number of boards and a couple of the boards do have. Public input two different times. They'll do it at the beginning of the meeting and then they'll do it right before, and then there will be the option of right before adjournment. So. This could be added to our. You know, order of business and then it would give the presiding officer the flexibility, again, depending on what's going on at a particular meeting.
Have to be like that every time. It may be one of those, one of those issues where. You know, if you look and you see hands at the end of the meeting and it's like more than five. You may want to give people opportunity to say something. You know, or at least up to five. Let me, maybe I should put it that way. It's like, oh, well, you know, some people. Some more. Information that they either want or they want to give or maybe, you know, there may be a solution or something in there. Or something that we haven't thought about while we were discussing a particular subject.
Mayor Oles?
So Diane, I think that the city of Champaign structures there, so they have two public input. One at the beginning of the meeting and then one at the end. Is that right?
They do it at the time of agenda items and then at the end.
Is that how they're handling it via Zoom as well?
I believe so.
I know they have the major portion of public input at the end. Of public input, but I didn't know how they were handling the.
They do take, they do take it at agenda items. I think from a Zoom standpoint. It's it's more efficient to do it. If you're going to speak to an agenda item, speak, you do it all at once at the beginning of the meeting, then get to the agenda items and then if you want to add that separate section at the end for general comments or follow up. Well, actually, for general comments, I still think it's important only one, you know, person speak once during a meeting, just to be fair. And while we're on this topic, I think it's. If there's a question of fairness, if some people are allowed to speak for five minutes and then suddenly the rest of them get cut to three minutes, which is why. I recommended that we just stay with three minutes for the Zoom format, just to be fair to people. But I like the idea of focusing on Zoom. If you want to do Zoom rules, we can, we can adjust this to make it Zoom rules. I mean, that's where we're going to be. This is going to be our world for the next six months to a year, I think a year. So. We can go that route and I can try to incorporate as many of the comments that I. Got from you tonight. To bring back two weeks from now.
I just, Sharice, I want to piggyback real quick and just say, you know, I would never not support more opportunities for public input. I honestly don't think that it would be too difficult if we put it in the rules and made it known. That we could do three, we could. Do public input and then ask people when they're recognized, do you want to give your input now? Do you want to give your input at the time of the agenda? As we've traditionally done, that's usually been the two choices. And then would you prefer to give your input at the ends? And we give three opportunities for people to speak at one of those, one of those three opportunities. Sorry, I go back to my chair duties. Julie, you had raised your hand.
You know, I will say I I do, I support consistence as well. And I think. And by saying three minutes at an hour long means that, you know, that's a guaranteed twenty people are going to get to speak, which I think. That in itself is in opening up an opportunity to ensure that many people could speak each week. But I also would say, you know, to emphasize as I think what would be really great would be. A sort of teaching opportunity at the beginning of each meeting to say, just as a reminder, for those of you who weren't here, this is how this will work. And how and if we all kind of have the same. Script to use that that would be great. And one thing I would like to include in there is that. Although I set and take notes of the name of each person who speaks and of what their main points are. In reality, reading the word on the page and an email that's sent into me, I have. A better opportunity to really think about what they were saying and reply in specific terms to that. And so. And I may be different. I'm more of a visual learner than I am oral, and so I know that's just how I learn, but. I would say that too, and I would take a little bit of, you know, I just want to push back a little bit on what Jared was insinuating was that any of us who want to. Make our meetings run more efficiently to ensure equity of access to public input without always pushing our meetings to the, you know, the length. The latest possible by law means somehow that I'm that I that we are not valuing public input and I I certainly do not. See that as any in any way, shape or form and I I'm. Nothing I've said would reflect that either, so I would ask that that not be interpreted. In my words, thanks.
Thanks, Julie. Other comments? I'm not seeing any, so we have a motion on the floor to keep it in committee and a second and. There are no further comments. I'll ask Phil's, please go to roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. That motion passes, so this topic will stay in committee and come back for council on October 5th. I'm sure we'll be able to send any further suggestions to city staff of things we'd like to see in consideration for the next one. Or proposal for just Zoom rules versus a change to the city code itself. Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, but before we do that, I had told Sarah Nixon, we were going to give her time to speak. In between eight and nine and we're at that point, so Jason, if we could get her unmuted, sir, you can give us your comment if you're ready.
Yeah, I am. Thank you. Thank you for the accommodation and I do have a fever, but doing my best. Also, I would appreciate a copy of the citizen input resources you mentioned that you have. So my name is Sarah Nixon. I'm a resident of Urbana. Just like resident Tracy Chang stated earlier. I too do not wake up on Monday mornings gleeful that tonight there might be a city council meeting. I and the others who convene here week after week are as weary as we are outraged. But we will continue to show up to speak up on behalf of the collective about serious concerns and violations. Against the public wheel because others in the community count on someone to do so. And we are that someone who take it upon ourselves to stand up. And speak to you about what the people believe is broken within the city's administration and service delivery. And so I'm speaking up tonight to the city council in regard to agenda item eight because firstly, I believe that freedom of speech matters. It matters perhaps more than anything else in a democracy. And with the proposed amendment to city code in order to curtail citizens' free speech during public input, our democratic principles and policies feel threatened. And secondly, agenda item number 10, the public's access to public records matters. And I'm speaking to this because I have personal understanding and experience with the issue of citizens' rights to access public records under the Illinois Freedom of Information Act. A recent experience bears sharing. I submitted last month a request under FOIA for records related to the violent assault of Lee Lewis on April 10th of this year. By the UPD specifically requesting all records related to the Hillary Heinz review. A shameful tax dollar paid whitewash of the truth. And a patent misuse of public funds shamelessly diverted toward covering up police brutality and then covering up the cover up. Now, on the city's website, it states in black and white that email is a delivery option. That the FOIA requested can choose, so I requested that the records be provided to me via email. And your FOIA officers arbitrarily, capriciously, and perhaps even maliciously denied that request and insisted instead upon issuing the documents on a flash drive. And requiring me to travel to the city building to collect it during this COVID pandemic, saying that the volume of responsive records made the flash drive imperative. And the city placed another obstacle in my way in the form of an arbitrary fee of eight dollars. I informally appealed requesting that they reverse their decision to charge me gratuitously, even if minimally. For a flash drive on which they decided unilaterally to issue the documents. And I asked instead that they please issue them via email in a zip folder at no cost. It felt like they made their decisions frivolously, but I made my request because I'm a low-income Urbana resident who is attempting to engage with the process of city administration as an act of civic duty. In order to be of service to my community and eight dollars trivial even symbolic to you. Actually does represent a burden to me, especially during this time of COVID-induced income standstill. I live on an extremely restricted budget. My FOIA request was reasonable and of critical relevance. I was requesting documents that are of wide importance to the whole Urbana community. And the matter at hand, the appointment of Hillary Heinz by the city has been the subject of considerable and growing public focus and concern. At city council meetings and editorials and articles published locally and in public discussions among city residents. As well, the firm's work is the subject of ongoing journalistic focus and news media publications across the country. And I had contributed in the capacity of co-writer to an article in the city's hiring of Hillary Heinz, published last month in the Public Eye newspaper. Finally, reversing the decision to charge me a fee would impose little to no hindrance to the city and would demonstrate good faith and a commitment to transparency. But I received no reply to my informal appeal and this was disappointing and concerning. It appeared to confirm that Urbana City FOIA staff's posture of disrespect for citizen engagement. That so many in Urbana have been exposing and deploring for so many months now. Now, as it happened, a community member, Mr. Christopher Hansen, was able to pick up the flash drive for me. And in closing, I just want to underscore that he was easily able to upload and send to me the responsive records via email, all of them, and I had no difficulty whatsoever opening the attachments that he emailed me. So the city's apparent failure to adhere to FOIA regulation and its own policy here suggests not just a cavalier disregard for the statute, but. Also a singling out of my request precisely because it related to the politically sensitive issue of Urbana Police Department misfeasance. And what emerges as quite plain to me and to all residents who are engaged and offering either feedback is that the tactic. Of erecting barriers and obstacles to public access is intentional and in no way is transparency and in no way serves the public interest and I think. The city can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I just want to let Charlotte G. know, Charlotte, I do see that your hand, your hand goes up. I did not see you during the regular comment period, but I do want you to know that we have. Your email here and I hope we answer some of your questions and some of your concerns during our discussion on. The public input that was under consideration tonight. It's going to come back in two weeks. At committee, the whole for us to consider again, I wouldn't. Encourage you to come to that meeting as well to try and deliver a couple of comments or perhaps you have new comments based on our discussions tonight, so. I just wanted to know I saw your hands, even though I won't recommend you for comment at this time. Okay, so we're gonna keep going. Now we're at staff reports and first up, we have ten shared principles. Diane, did you want to do that or we have positions or else?
Yes. Wanted to briefly recap. We had a, I think, a very successful event on Thursday night. It was the workshop, the training. Workshop sponsored by the city of Urbana in conjunction with the NAACP of Champaign County, the president, Minnie Pearson. The workshop was conducted by the Robert Moore, who's the NAACP state. With the NAACP at the state level Criminal Justice Committee. And Ed Wodjeski with the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. Also in attendance was the president of the state of Illinois NAACP, Teresa Haley, a number of other local members. Members of the community, city council members and ten sworn officers from the Urbana Police Department. They went over the principles. People discussed each of those. We were outside at the Vineyard Church. I want to thank the Vineyard Church for allowing us to use their tent that allowed us to do an in-person. An in-person event that was safe in terms of COVID. Distanced, masked and all that, and it was really a really good opportunity for discussion and several people told me afterwards that it was the first time. They had had the opportunity to sit down with a police officer and just have some honest, open conversations and really kind of understand where. People were coming from each perspective, and that's the whole point of this particular workshop. So following that, the police chief Bryant Seraphin and Minnie Pearson, president of the NAACP Champaign County, signed a copy of the ten shared principles. Interestingly, Mr. Moore. Told me that while a couple of hundred police departments have signed on to the ten shared principles over the last three years. Only five or six city councils had affirmed them. So while Urbana was not first to the table in signing on to the principles. The city council of Urbana was one of the very first to do this in the state. So that's a testament to the to the city's commitment to these. So this is the the other thing that it was, I was happy to see is that a couple of. Students from Urbana High School, members of the group, the Self-Made Kings and their coordinator, Mr. Mont Peppers also attended and it was an excellent. I think an excellent opportunity and experience for the students as well. So I want to thank the council members who were able to come and you may have observations of your own.
Any council members want to discuss their experience or ten shared principles in general? Dennis?
Yeah. I was at a table. We, there were only three of us, but. Ms. Haley, the head of the NAACP for the state was at my table and one of the police officers. Who we had an excellent conversation. Revealed a lot of really interesting things about background thoughts about. The topic that we were assigned, which was each table had a different point or. Principle to discuss in particular, so there was a focus at each table on different topic. And ours was, you know, increasing diversity and promoting it and I think that our. I I came away from it with a lot of respect for the community that was involved and. I thought it was a valuable experience. I'll just say that.
Thanks, Dennis. Bill?
I just want to share that this was my third ten shared principles event that I've attended personally. In in my, you know, professional career and I believe they get they get better as I go along. And I I think it was so rewarding and so valuable for not only me, but for the people at my table and for the city of Urbana. That I would just encourage for this not to be our last ten shared principles event. This is, this is an event that doesn't have to happen just one time. This, this is an event that can keep on recurring. On on a regular basis because it. It yields rewards beyond belief every time we have one. So I suggest we keep on going.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, I'm I'm really happy you said that, Bill, because I think that. I think that the chief had mentioned that, you know, how do we, how do we work with the community and it's building one. One connection at a time. And so I really, I sat at a table with people I never met before. And I felt like I had an opportunity to learn from them, you know, what their thoughts were on the principle that we were talking about. And so I think the more that we can have interactions and the more we can get together, different groups of people to have those interactions and. Have conversations like that, I think would be invaluable to this. Would be invaluable to the city moving forward. So.
Thanks, Danielle. Diane, did you want to say something? Sorry.
I have to say, I, I wholeheartedly agree. And that's one of the things I would like our soon to be announced community engagement coordinator. To help facility.
Good. Julie?
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend. So thank you all for being there. But I. Bill, in your perspective, having done this a few times and then everyone else was there, is it something that we could consider? Offering as a remote event and then putting people into breakout rooms to have those discussions. I just wonder if that might maybe help people who, so I didn't come because I was waiting on a COVID test. And I felt. Like I should do what the county health department says, which is wait until you get your negative. So I didn't come. But there might be other people who like, I know somebody who takes care of her mother and doesn't go to any public events, but would love to go to an event like this. Or somebody else who maybe, you know, works out of town and that kind of thing. So I just wondered. If there was the possibility of doing events like this sometimes via Zoom.
Well, I appreciate you asking me, but, but I'm, I'm, I think on record not being the huge, the biggest fan of Zoom meetings. And, and Microsoft Teams meetings and virtual events. You know, obviously they work, we're doing this, we're doing this virtually. I think. You know, I'm probably not the leader in technology and thinking outside the box when it comes to, to that sort of technology. I do think that they could work in a, in a virtual environment. But I'm also a huge advocate of the nuances that a in-person meeting. Provides. I think, you know, the, just, just the body language, the facial expressions, even with the mask on. Just, you know, just that. Personal contact, even in a social distancing environment, I, I think is, is really, really invaluable for something like this. It shows the, the honesty, the sincerity. It shows literally the, the, the heart and the soul being opened up. To your, to your fellow person, to your, you know, to somebody in your community and, and. You know, I, I agree with you. I, I'm very sensitive to people that. Are, are, you know, they're afraid for good reason. To go to in-person meetings because of COVID scare because of the pandemic. But I also will say that I'm a huge advocate of the in-person meeting as well.
Thank you, Bill. Sharice?
I was just going to kind of agree with, with Bill there. Minnie Pearson is, is. Attending the meeting tonight. Ms. Pearson, maybe she could, could say even whether something like that would be possible. She might be able to, to comment more on that. That's all I was going to, but that in, and I, I. Thoroughly enjoyed the discourse that we had at that meeting that we had the opportunities. To have. And I think that it's, I do think it's something like what Bill said that we, it's something that should be a regular. A regular event, but also invite more and more, including others, others. So I mean, there was a good attendance and I like, I would like to see others, other lead. Community leaders and people that are. That do, are doing community work. Regardless of what, but I'd like to see more and more folks in, involved in doing that particular thing.
Thanks, Sharice. Diane?
I would, I would ask you to give Minnie Pearson an opportunity to comment. I didn't realize she was here.
Minnie, if you are here, you are a panelist, you should be able to unmute yourself. And provide comment if you'd like.
I think Jason's going to have to unmute her.
She's a, she's a panelist, so she should be able to mute herself, but. I've asked her to unmute. See if that gets her, gets her attention. She may just have it on the background. Well, Sharice, we have her contact information, so you could always reach out to her and ask her to. Respond to your comments to full counsel, because I'm sure we'd all like to hear them.
I, I spoke to her briefly after and I can say this, that, that we both. Felt that it went well, that it, it, it was a, a good experience for, for everyone.
I forgot to mention, we did record the whole thing and it will be on available through UPTV. So great folks can watch it.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay. All right. We will move on to our next agenda item then. That is the TASER subcommittee reports.
Mr. Liggett, could you add Mr. Dossit to the panelists, please? Thank you. So. First of all, I apologize to the council. I, I recognize this morning that the memos and question weren't. Included in the packet. So I sent those to you this morning. Hopefully you're able to get an opportunity to read those. What I'm presenting to you is a written report that is required under ordinance to be submitted and it is inexplicably. Late. I don't know why it is late as it is, but it was discovered through the process of a CPR. Meeting that the, the city owed a report to council 12 months after the implementation of the TASER program. Again, I can't tell you why it was late, but we are now making good on our obligation. So what this report detailed was strengths, weaknesses and effectiveness of the TASER program. The memo outlines the number of incidents between the beginning of the program, which was February of 15. To March of 20, when I authored or tendered the final report to the chief. There were a total of 61 incidents and of those. Thirty-nine cases were reviewed by the civilian police review board. Thirty-six of those were displays and three of those were discharges. So through the course of the report, I outlined what I believed are the strengths, weaknesses and effectiveness of the program. With respect to strengths, the first was relationship between the police department and the civilian police review board. Over the last five years, we've spent hours together discussing situations, going through different scenarios, talking about. Case law and things like that. And through the course of that back and forth. I believe that the police department staff in the civilian police review board had developed a positive relationship. One of the other strengths that I outlined was that just through that Q and A process, there was some natural oversight. Just by the mere fact of asking questions about the process, the civilian police review board engaged in oversight of the police department. With respect to weaknesses, the first one that I listed was an inefficient use of staff time. The reason that I explained that is the, the process is fairly cumbersome. It involves reading reports, redacting reports, watching videos, redacting videos, having to watch the videos again and re-redacting. There are some instances where I would redact a video. In, in some of this is my own fault because I'm not a redaction specialist. You know, I'd have to redact the same piece of video three or four times to make sure that I get all the faces, all the names. All the things to keep the videos as anonymous as possible. And so I would say for every hour. Of video that I had to do, it probably took me on order of four to six hours of redaction time. With respect to the video, one of the other weaknesses that we found is that the video quality that we presented to the civilian police review board. Was not great. And that was because we were using a camera that was mounted on the TASER itself. And so we had a lot of video of the ground. And that was something that the civilian police review board commented on. They said, well, it's great. We can hear it. But we can't see what's going on. And that's because the officer is not pointing the TASER at the person, but the officer is pointing the TASER at the ground. And the last thing that we found is that our policy, our TASER policy was out of date. Because we switched from the TASER camera to body worn cameras, that policy has been corrected and has been republished. With respect to effectiveness, which was the last one, the way I sort of characterize it was it, it developed. A maturity of the civilian police review board and the process. They got a lot of reps. They got to see the videos. They got to understand the situations. And I feel like through the course of those, those five years, that the civilian police review, review board. Really understood the work that they were doing better. So I know Mr. Dossit's here. He authored. His own attempting reports. I would ask if he has thoughts and comments to provide them.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Yeah, thanks, everyone. Yeah, second most of what Rich has said, trying to pull it out a little bit more though to the responsibilities that the board took on. In the context of ensuring the citizens of Urbana that the TASER implementation was being done in a. In a justifiable and correct manner. And so all of the review that Rich talked about. That let us cooperate. Although we often see people from UPD at meetings and the chief is a frequent attender. Really was all about ensuring the community that this policy that we rolled out. Under significant and heated opposition in some context. The council chamber was literally full for a couple of meetings. People were really concerned about this. And what I'd like to report is that. I think we've got good control within the department. Scott, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we've got to get a motion on the floor to extend the meeting. I just realized what time it was. Thanks, Bill.
I'll move the weeks in the meeting until 11.
Second from Bill. Phyllis, can we get a real call real quick?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, that motion passes. The meeting will be extended till 11. Sorry, Scott, please continue. No, that's fine. I'll, I'll try to be brief here. So, so essentially what I'm talking about is the division four and strengths. And what we found is that people who were presented with the TASER, just in the context of a display. Responded pretty immediately to verbal warnings about the use of the TASER. And in very few cases and only with the most belligerent people, did the TASER seem to agitate them. So we didn't have cases whereupon seeing the TASER implemented or having an officer note that the TASER. Had been displayed that. That we had a lot of people freak out and, and kind of compound and go to a more critical sort of level. We've only had three discharges. And in no cases did the display or use further escalate an incident or result. In the use of the deadly force. We got to learn a lot about what I call the situational attributes of the different officers. And the audio did give us the chance to listen to. Calming tactics that were used to contribute to these nonviolent conclusions. And I think now we've got a rugged picture of, you know, routine implementation. That UPD uses. And I think, I hope the community can rest assured that with, you know, our continued review. That some of the problems or fears that were noted early on in the implementation. You know, ju- just haven't and I, I hope don't materialize. The fact of the matter is that the city of Urbana and UPD now owns the TASER issue as opposed to. Deferring it to county or in another administrative unit that could have applied a TASER on the streets of Urbana. And I think our review is. You know, shows merit and that, you know, we're doing a good job with the use of the TASERS in the city. And the cooperation between UPD and at least the review board has been real positive. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I'm sorry. Do you have anything further? That's it. Okay, thanks, Scott. Council member discussion, Bill Colbrook.
Rich's question is for you. So what I just heard was what appeared to be a very positive report, albeit the first report after, after several years. Obviously, I was not on council whenever this issue was first debated, but I am very aware that there was a lot of very. Intense discourse amongst the council, amongst the community on whether Urbana should outfit. A few Urbana officers with TASERS. Given the fact that several years have passed, given the fact that I think we just heard a very positive report. That was unbiased and, and laid out the facts. I don't know how many officers have TASERS on the department. So I've got, I've got a question about that. And the second question is, is there any? Thought to adding TASERS to Urbana to, to equip more officers? Because as Mr. Dawson just, just mentioned, there was. Some thought that, you know, we would as a city defer to other agencies. And quite frankly, I don't know how many, how many TASERS we have. And is there still deferment to other agencies because we don't have enough?
Great question. So the answer to your first question is we have 14 TASERS total. We do not share them. We do not treat them as fleet. So we have 14 officers that have TASERS issued to them and that's it. With respect to equipping additional officers, so one of the constraints that the police department has put on itself. Is that we have a specific, a couple of specific training requirements, but probably the biggest one is that TASER officers are, are. Mandated to be CIT officers as well, crisis intervention team officers. And so there's that additional burden of that additional training and, you know, a couple of times. There's been this internal discussions about whether or not we want to open that up. And Chief Seraphin has been adamant that only CIT officers. Will have TASERS. I, I agree with his assessment. I believe that we should stay at that 40-hour CIT class as a prerequisite in order to carry a TASER. I think it just brings a lot of skills to the table. And I think what you get is in large part those positive outcomes that Mr. Dawson talked about. You know, the other limiting factor that we have, quite frankly, are finances. These are not, these are not inexpensive things. So that's one of the things that we're wrestling with. We're trying to figure out different funding for that. I think we're fine right now for the 14. You know, I think if we were to bring additional TASERS to the table, it would, you know, maybe be another half dozen or so. I don't think we're probably going to be able to afford much more than that, if, if those at all.
Has there been any, any limitations from the training standpoint? I know the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board has, has changed kind of the standards for officers. I believe they've got to have. Two years' experience before they're even entered into a class, allowed to be in a class. Has, has that restriction throttled basically Urbana PD from getting officers in CIT? Because not only does it speak to now the TASER issue, but obviously to the, to the mental health response that we've been talking about in the community as well.
You know, the, the short answer is I don't know the answer to the question. And that's probably a better question for Lieutenant Bain, who's our training officer. I, I'm guessing that in a couple of instances, it's probably limited us. I think probably more the limiting factor isn't necessarily the requirement of two years that you're talking about. But I think it's more just class size in general, right? Because everybody wants mental health classes. Everybody wants de-escalation classes. Everybody wants crisis intervention team classes. And if you couple that with the severe reduction in training because of COVID. And we're basically shut off for, for training for six months or so. You know, I, I, I think those sorts of things probably are limiting us more than the, than the training standards boards requirements.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Other questions or comments? Anything else?
So I'm just looking, Scott, at your recommendations here as you have listed in your report. One is to continue the review of TASER discharges as planned and at all pertinent documents and work with. Different staff and community members to address deficiencies and the changing requirements of the Urbana city. changing requirements of the Urbana citizens regarding TASER use. So those are, those are your three recommendations. Scott, you're still muted. So I'm just wondering about action or direction from city council to CPRB or to the staff members. What would be the process as we move forward?
So the, what the ordinance requires is that, that city staff tender this report to the mayor and the city council. So by, by me tendering this report, we've complied with that section of the city code. With respect to next steps, I think that's probably a conversation more broadly with the civilian police review board. With respect to TASERS, the police department plans on doing exactly what the civilian police review board has asked, which is continue to present discharge cases directly to the civilian police review board. And I'm making display cases available to the civilian police review board for their inspection. If they have questions, of course, they can ask. But I don't believe there is an action item for you. I'm sorry, Mr. Dawson.
No, no, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, Rich. I stepped on you there. I was trying to respond. Let me back up just a second though and address Bill Colbrook's comment. I, I don't, I, 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 I may have not been clear. The deference to other policing units that I mentioned before was in relationship to the system as it existed in Urbana before the deployment of our TASERS and the implementation, the writing and the implementation of the policy. So we were in a situation, and this was part of the argument that was happening at city council, is that TASERS can be used in Urbana. A county cop can pull one out and use it. But we don't have the right to review that implementation or try to think about how that integrates into our community. And so, you know, I, 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 I don't believe that there's that deference in a real-time run mode at UPD. That's not what I meant to imply. That was sort of the preceding situation that we had. And so the, some of the, the argument of some community members as well, you know, you're opening up kind of a Pandora, Pandora's box. You're going to make it possible to, for a TASER to be used in Urbana. Well, it was already possible for a TASER to be used in Urbana, but that wasn't under the control of the, the citizens of Urbana. Because under some of those cases, county was called, and then that's where the implementation happened. So. And Mary Alice, to your question, I mean, as you guys know, we have a lot of document work and reporting work that we're woefully behind on in CPRB. And one of those is our policy and procedures manual, which literally was never updated to include the procedures related to the TASER implementation at all. And so that's the big thing I'm kind of including in that category. The, the second one. You know, and in terms of the, you know, the third recommendation, you know, I think we just need to keep on going back to the community to see what it thinks about the policy, you know. You know, maybe this discussion will, will result in community members, you know, coming to us and being, you know, interested in, in what we've done and making improvements. So maybe a little bit of a catch-all. I don't have anything specific in mind as more action, with the exception of the cleanup to policies and procedures, just so that we can, you know, make sure that we've documented what we've done. Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Bill Brown?
Yeah, the, the ordinance, the CPRB ordinance, I think, still requires review of displays as well as deployments. So it does, I don't think it goes into a lot of detail over what kind of review that means. And that would be more in your policy and procedures. I don't know that I've actually ever seen your policy and procedures. Is that online?
No, and I think when we started doing cleanup, Vasilyia Clark and I, six months ago, that I may have had the only copy in existence, Bill. But that has been widely distributed to staff and to, to other members of the board. This is work that Todd Rent did with our group in two thousand and twelve.
So will the, the, it sounds like you still have the capability to review displays. Will you be able to handle that in the policies and procedures, differentiate what a display review versus a deployment review would be? Or is that something we need to change in the ordinance?
Well, I think, I think that's a conversation that we have to have inside the board and then, you know, may perhaps come back to council if there's, if, you know, we, we, you know, need some clarity in, in that. The ordinance uses the term in a manner that, you know, as per Rich's report probably covers us. But I, I'd like to want, I, I'd like for that language to be as explicit as we can. And since there's a possibility that we're looking at other, to address other deficiencies in the ordinance, that kind of gets to be a, a bigger package of actions. And I don't know what kind of timeframe will be on. But certainly there's a glaring hole in the policies and procedures manual that we have. And so we, we need to get started on, on that as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Scott. And I would certainly suggest that the CPRB consider having a discussion just generally about the policy, since it's been so long since we looked at it and coming to council, maybe with a presentation and discussion item for us to consider changes to it going forward, since it's been a while since it was written. We'd probably stand to look at it again and give it a review.
All right.
Any other comments for Scott or Deputy Chief Searls? Or comments generally amongst council? Okay, Dennis?
I do appreciate finally having the review come to us and present it, even though it's late. Because as you said, it was a great concern to the community whether these would be safe and were handled appropriately. And I think that the initial review we here have heard is, is pretty positive and that, that if we've only had quite a few displays, but only, only three discharges, that's a, a, a very successful, moderate use of this tool. And it seems to help de-escalation and during the police contacts. So I commend my friend Scotty for bringing that to us. Thanks a lot.
If I could, if, if I could be so bold as to offer a point of clarity on this, just to break down the numbers for you. I, I did it in the memo, but let me just break it down very simply. Between February fifteen to March of twenty, there were sixty-one total incidents. Fifty-four of those were displays. Seven of those were discharges. The CPRB has reviewed three of those. Remaining four are pending court. And because they're pending court, they couldn't be presented to the CPRB. So the CPRB has reviewed thirty-nine cases total. Thirty-six of those were discharges. And three of those were, I'm sorry, thirty-six of those were displays and three of those were discharges. So that's where the number three comes from.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to the final item. I would, this is discussion item for a request policies and fees, which I requested added to the agenda being in the late hour that it is and considering probably the weeds that we may get into in such a discussion item, I would ask if council members would motion in second to defer to the next committee of the whole meeting. Because I'd prefer have more opportunity to discuss this at length than trying to cram it in in the last thirteen minutes of this meeting. Mary Alice?
Since I'm the next committee chair, I'm happy to make the motion to move this to the next committee of the whole as a discussion item.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll make that second. Happy to do it.
Thanks, Dennis. Diane? Diane, you're muted.
We, we have coming up in the next few weeks, some pretty full agendas. So before we pick a specific date for this particular topic, I would appreciate the opportunity to look at our committee agendas to make sure that we can fit all this in. We just got a request, for example, for next week for a special town board meeting on Monday night before the council meeting. So, you know, things are coming up unexpectedly. So.
I, I would say, since we have the motion in the second on there, we'll, we'll leave it there if the request comes. I'm sure you can ask the chair if she would prefer to defer onto the next one.
And the, okay. And the other thing we would ask is what exactly do you, what information are you asking for, for this discussion item? Nothing was, nobody checked with staff before this item was put on this week's meeting. And people aren't sure exactly what the information is being requested or what topics you want to be discussed on this.
I, I can provide a, a list of topics and things to address.
Okay, great. Thank you. That'll help plan.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have some topics that could send to, I think one thing would be if there's been any changes since the presentation since in July. It sounds like maybe there's been some clarity provided over what kind of charges we can, what, what we can charge for. And, and I've asked for a, a clear for you policy explaining what the charges could be to be put on the website. And I've provided a couple of links to other cities that have done that. So I can resend that to staff if you'd like. But I, I don't know if you can do any of that before our next meeting, but I think anything you know, that can help explain what, what may have changed since the last presentation on it.
Right, right now the motion is for the next committee of the whole meeting. So we'll have two weeks before we see it. Okay, well, we've got that motion to defer in the second on it. So that'll go to the October fifth committee of the whole meeting. Were there any final words from council or the mayor before we adjourn? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting.
No, no, Jared, you're gonna have a vote.
Oh, a vote?
Oh, do we have to have a vote in order to?
Not a motion to defer.
Oh.
Motion to defer only needs a motion in a second.
Okay, sorry.
No worries.
I do have.
Yes, Dan.
Sorry, I do have a few COVID-related items that I wanted to bring to your attention. One is you may have heard, but the eviction moratorium has been extended by the state. It was part of executive order twenty twenty dash fifty-five. So the statewide eviction moratorium is now in effect through October seventeenth, twenty twenty. You may recall that my executive order twenty dash oh nine, which was the one relating to gatherings and face masks. The council put an expiration date of September twenty eighth on that. I spoke with, contacted Julie Pride today. She's recommending that that be extended. The numbers on campus, especially in terms of COVID cases, are coming down. They're headed in the right direction. But she recommended that we extend that. So I'm gonna, I will go ahead and extend that and bring it back to council for ratification. And I'm thinking we'll just do it through November first to make it coincide with the extension of our ban on special event permits. And that'll get us through the Halloween weekend. So that's coming up. We've had questions about local governments and vaccines. Public health has protocols in place and they exercise them all the time for mass vaccinations. But we're told, don't expect anything until next year. So there's, we've got to get through fall and winter first. And along those lines, everyone is, who can possibly do it, is recommended to get flu shots. Not that it'll prevent COVID, but it will prevent complicating conditions. We're still waiting also from the state of Illinois guidance on Halloween. Believe it or not, the governor is getting a lot of questions about Halloween. And the Illinois Municipal League has asked for guidance on that. The IML has also actually filed a lawsuit trying to get clarification on whether or not, what, what the, whether or not the election day holiday that was passed by the state legislature actually applies to municipalities. While everyone supports the right, you know, everyone supports and encourages voting on election day, this particular legislation was passed without really any notice to the cities. And it has a lot of implications for budget and scheduling and labor agreements and all that. And we have really still don't know if it even applies to us. So we're also a pulling place. So we're waiting clarification on that. As far as the utility shut-offs, the best assistance for people locally is still through the Regional Planning Commission at Brookins Administrative Center and the Light Heat Program. People can call two one seven three eight four one two two six. They have Thursdays are open for walk-ins. And that's, I think that's the extent of it. And we are now starting to look at options or explore options for how restaurants, bars, et cetera, can get through the winter. This is going to be a very, very rough time for our local businesses. And there aren't as many good options as we had over the summertime. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Well, with no further business before this body, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.